Good morning. Good morning. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to today's city council meeting. The meeting will begin momentarily. As a matter of fact, the meeting is about to begin. Please take your seats and silence your listening devices. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning. Good morning. This council will come to order. Madam Clerk, please take a quorum roll call.
Now open, the quorum is now open. Please use your e-device. Please use your e-device. If you need support, please raise your hand. If you need support, please raise your hand. The voting is now open. Okay, we'll now take a voice vote for those who have not voted. Alderman, Alder Person Hopkins, not present. Alder Person Da, oh, Alder Person Robinson, not present. Alder Person Hall, not present. Alder Person Mitchell. Alder Person Mitchell is present. Alder Person Beal, not present. Alder Person Ramirez. Ramirez is present. Alder Person Gutierrez. Gutierrez is present. Alder Person Lopez. Lopez is present. Alder Person Coleman, not present. Alder Person Moore, not present. Alder Person Curtis, not present. Alder Person O'Shea. Alder Person O'Shea is present. Alder Person Mosley, not present. Alder Person Taylor, not present. Alder Person Burnett. Alder Person Burnett is present. Alder Person Wagispak. Wagispak is present. Alder Person Rodriguez Sanchez, not present. Alder Person Ramirez Rosa, not present. Alderman, Alder Person Viegas. Alder Person Viegas is present. Alder Person Mitz. Mitz is not present. Alder Person Spasato. Alderman Spasato is present. Alder Person Riley. Riley is not present. Anyone I miss? Alderman David Moore. Alderman David Moore is present. Anyone else walk in? All right. The quorum is now closed. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have 38 members that are present. We have a quorum. There are a few members that have asked for the Rule 59 to be considered to allow them to participate remotely, and those persons are the following. Alders Curtis, Taylor, Rodriguez Sanchez, and Ramirez Rosa. Can I get a motion to approve their remote participation? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. The ayes have it. These individuals will be able to participate remotely, and please add them to the present roll call, Madam Clerk. Do you all mind standing? And rise as we pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please remain standing for invocation, which this morning will be delivered by Pastor Steve Cobble from Refuge Church. It is a great honor to pray over this meeting, and I would ask if you would bow your heads. Oh great God, gather us now to be with you as you are with us. I pray as things are shared today, as deliberating messages are shared, God, that you would give us the spirit of what the great Apostle Paul prayed in Philippians Chapter 1, that our love may abound more and more in knowledge and depth of insight, so that we may be able to discern what is best, not best for me, best for us, and may be pure and blameless for the day of Christ, filled with the fruit of righteousness that comes through Jesus Christ, through the glory and praise of God. And so, Father, I pray that our love would abound more and more. So often we find ourselves leaning into our ability to know the right thing to say at the right moment, at our ability to make a compelling case or compelling argument, our ability to say the right thing in the right moment, God. So often we trust in the degree that we put a title behind our name, so often we trust in the school that we went to, so often we trust in the training that we have, so often we trust in our personalities and our abilities to persuade for the sake of what we want to get done, and yet I pray with the Apostle Paul prayed, that our love may abound more and more. That true knowledge, God, would you arrest our attention and accost us to know that true knowledge comes through love. And as we are all here to share what might make for a better Chicago, God, I pray that the heart of every person would be centered around love. I'm reminded of what Jesus said in His Sermon on the Mount, "Blessed are the peacemakers for they shall inherit the earth," not those who sweep it under the rug, not those who act like it didn't happen, but those who try to come in and make things whole, to come in and bring shalom. And so, Father, I pray that Spirit over this meeting this morning, I pray the Spirit of Christ, who did not count equality with God, something to be grasped or snatched at, but humbled Himself with the Spirit of humility, pervade this place even now, and give us ears to hear one another, not just to say things, but to not just hear one thing come in one ear and out the other, but to truly hear and to truly serve as the people that we have been called to be as elected officials who serve, not the needs of us, but the needs of our communities, not the needs of one particular group of people, but the needs of all particular groups of people. And so, Father, I pray that Spirit over this meeting, the Spirit of governance of Nehemiah and Moses, that Spirit of listening, and I pray for wisdom and depth of insight, even as the Apostle Paul praised in this prayer, God, would our love for one another, our commitment to this city be something that captures the essence of what we say to one another today. I'm here to serve, I'm here to hear, I'm here to do what's best for all of us today, for your glory and our good. It's in Jesus' name that I pray, every heart said. Amen. And you may be seated. Thank you.
Can I have the names?
Madam Clerk.
I'm now going to call on the remote participants for a roll call for the quorum vote. Alder Person Taylor. Alder Person Taylor, are you here? Are you present? Alder Person Rodriguez Sanchez, are you present?
Present.
All right, Rodriguez Sanchez is present. Alder Person Curtis, are you present?
Present.
Curtis is present, and Alder Person Ramirez Rosa, are you present?
Ramirez Rosa, present.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This is the portion of the meeting for public comment.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for automatic review. Our first speaker today is A. Ann Holcomb.
Hello. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here to speak as co-chair on behalf of Ethos of South Shore, which stands for Environment, Transportation, Health, and Open Space. Ethos is an environmental justice organization started in 2014 with 92 members extending up and down the southeast lakefront, but with a particular emphasis on South Shore and South Chicago and wards 5, 7, 8, and 10. We, the members of Ethos, ask the members of City Council to slow down the approval process for the rezoning of the U.S. Steel South Works site requested by Related Chicago for the Illinois Quantum and Microelectronics Park. Please defer it to a committee, preferably rules. Our community needs more notice before such a big decision is made that will impact us for decades. The city of Chicago has not yet even held its third public meeting on this planned development. Ethos members have attended every public meeting held thus far, but have not yet gotten any real responses to our environmental questions and concerns. These concerns are not about flowers and butterflies, but about the quality of the air we take into our lungs, the quality of the water we take into our bodies, and the safety of our children. South Shore is already an environmental justice community. We're particularly concerned about the safety of building in a brown field. We know that the 14-year-old, often quoted I E P A letter that stated no further remediation necessary is not adequate. Shortcuts were made when samples were taken from the soil. Some areas of the site were not examined at all. No investigation was made to locate and remediate underground chemical storage tanks, and nothing has been done to treat the groundwater or the soil that's polluted with slag. Privately conducted environmental reviews were bad enough to cause the last proposed developer of the site to get out of their purchase contract via signing a nondisclosure agreement with U.S. Steel. Disturbing this brown field with construction could cause particulate matter to enter the air and seep into the aquifers feeding the lake. The lake is our drinking water, and nearby residents will be breathing that air. We're also concerned about the cryogenic chemicals and the amounts of lake water that SciQuantum will use to keep the quantum computer running at absolute zero, which is minus 459 degrees Fahrenheit. How much lake water will be used? How will the chemicals be transported to the site? Are they flammable? With trucks going through residential areas or barges on the lake? What if there's a chemical accident? What will happen to these chemicals after they've been used? How will they be disposed of? We need answers, and I think the city of Chicago would also want these answers. We ask that you do all you can to slow down this approval process and refer it to committees, preferably rules.
Thank you very much for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker this morning is Jen Kilgore.
Jen, please press star six to unmute.
Good morning. Thank you. This is Jen Kilgore, interim executive director of Friends of the Parks. First of all, I just want to say, support what Ann just said, and that we stand with community members who are asking hard questions about process and the purported economic benefits of this project. Today, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna focus on lakefront access. For generations, this community, the southeast side of Chicago, has been blocked from the lakefront through the steel mills, and so it's been exciting to see in recent decades increased access. This is part of what's called the missing last four miles of our open, clear, and free lakefront, and so any lakefront adjacent proposals in this area, I think, should be subject to high, high scrutiny, and this project seems like it's being fast-tracked. We do not have enough information about exactly what is being proposed, like Ann said, and upon a quick review of the supporting documents, I wonder if the developers have a full understanding of the site that they are proposing to build on. I understand that there is a difference between a land use map and exactly how land is being used. I just want to point out that all the land that is quoted as vacant, including Steel Workers Park, should maybe not be thought of as vacant. First of all, Steel Workers Park is a spectacular space. If you haven't been there, I urge you to visit it, and even the space that is slated for the development, it is actually brimming with life, wildlife, fauna, birds, and the section to the south is not, you know, it says residential mixed use, it's really a toxic waste, a toxic waste site. So having a full picture of what this environment is, I think, is important as we move forward in terms of deciding about the development. I noticed that the acknowledgements talk about, they talk about accessibility, they talk about air quality, they talk about Calumet River. I did not see mention of the lakefront, of lakefront access to the lakefront, of access along. These are really important questions to consider in addition to the other questions you'll be hearing about today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Hector Perez.
Hi, good morning, Mayor Johnson and Chicago City Council members. I'm here to speak on behalf of Chicago Alliance for Animals and to urge for City Council to please take action on Bill 02023-2983, which is the bill to ban new fur sales in the city of Chicago, and we request that this bill be placed on the license committee agenda next month for November. Fur farming is a cruel and unnecessary industry that causes immense suffering for animals. They're kept in cramped cages subjected to painful methods of killing, such as anal and vaginal electrocution, skinning alive, and sometimes gasped. In fact, November is when many of these animals will be slaughtered for their fur via these cruel and unregulated methods of killing. In addition to the heart of the issue, which is the concern for animal welfare, fur farming also has a negative impact on the environment. These produce large amounts of waste and contribute to climate change by releasing large amounts of greenhouse gases. A ban on fur sales in Chicago would send a strong message that our city does not tolerate animal cruelty, as is our fantastic track record already with our existing bans on horse carriages and the sale of cats and dogs. This will also show that the city of Chicago is against environmental destruction. This will also help to protect consumers from being misled by the fur industry's false and deceptive greenwashing, as recent studies have shown that real fur has significantly higher carbon footprints than fur alternatives. Numerous studies have also shown that fur farming poses significant risks, including the spread of viruses such as COVID-19 that could impact human health. In fact, many countries have already banned fur farming because of COVID-19 outbreaks. Again, I would urge you to please consider a ban on fur sales for the city of Chicago. 64% of likely voters in this country already support a full nationwide ban. In fact, on the federal level, there is already a bill to hopefully ban mink farming nationwide. Denver is also considering the same type of legislation next month, just as several U.S. cities, including the state of California, have already implemented. The Humane Society has also already sent the religious exemption language that Alderman Lopez drafted, which Chair Silverstein had requested. So why not have Chicago be the next progressive city to ban the sale of new fur? I thank you for your time and consideration and your compassion, and we hope that we can work together to pass this compassionate piece of legislation next month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Fasika Alam.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor Johnson and members of the City Council. My name is Fasika, and I have been a resident of the 8th Ward for more than eight years. I am also an Ethiopian immigrant who was called Chicago home for the last 27 years. I'm here today representing the United African Organization, which is a part of the Illinois Coalition for Immigrant and Refugee Rights, as well as our partners at Not Me We. As a resident of the 8th Ward, I'm extremely concerned about the lack of a community benefits agreement and what that means for my community, my neighbors, and the largely black community that continues to be dismissed and neglected. We need City Council to pass the CBA ordinance to protect long-term residents of South Shore and Woodlawn from displacement. We're asking for you to invest in our communities and support the CBA ordinance. Additionally, for the last two years, members of the Illinois Coalition for Immigrant and Refugee Rights and community leaders have been showing up to City Council meetings to talk about the urgent needs of our local organizations as we responded to a manufactured crisis that used real people as pawns and put our city on edge. As the mayor and as Alder Persons, the challenges that you face in crafting the upcoming city budget existed long before Texas Governor Abbott sent the first bus, just as the issues Abbott tried to exploit existed long before he decided to target our city and our values. And how you approach the budget heading into 2025 will set the tone for how the city is able to respond to the needs of both the most vulnerable Chicagoans and how the city is able to respond to crisis in the future. So my ask for all of you is to generate revenue for those who have, from those who have the means and not to balance the budget on the backs of working Chicagoans. We have options that are, you have options at your disposal, including a corporate head tax, reallocating TIF surpluses, a jet fuel tax, a payment in lieu of taxes program. Together, these revenue streams could generate hundreds of millions of dollars that can begin to close the budget gap and preserve city services for those that need them. Now is time to enact these long-term solutions to the long-term issues that Chicago has been facing. Thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker this morning is Michael Livsholz.
Good morning, Mayor Johnson and members of the City Council. On October 7, a year ago, Hamas murdered 35 American citizens among 1,200 Israelis. Most of these murdered Americans lived near Gaza and had progressive political beliefs and were supportive of the Palestinian right of self-determination. Nevertheless, Hamas chose to murder them anyway. Hamas wanted to murder them because the Hamas leader wanted to start a regional war to have Iran defeat Israel and defeat our own government. Hamas started this aggression hoping that Iran would join them in invading our ally. This decade is becoming an open season on our country, with Russia invading Ukraine, China planning to invade Taiwan three years from now, and Hamas invading Israel a year ago, hoping to start a big war in the Middle East. I also want to remind you how Hamas prepared themselves to sacrifice tens of thousands of Palestinians in this war. Here in America, our constitution says that our military is prohibited from using civilian homes for themselves. If our military came to you and said that your home is gonna be part of an army base, and the army base would be under your home, would you agree? I think not. I'm sure you would refuse, and you would fight against having your home used to shelter soldiers hiding under your home. On the other hand, in Gaza, the leader of Hamas, Sinwar, built tunnels under people's houses and under schools and under mosques to hide the Hamas soldiers under the civilians. His soldiers even built exits in and out of his tunnels into the homes of civilians. These exits go even into the bedrooms of married couples to allow the Hamas soldiers to hide among the Palestinians. So on this anniversary of the Hamas attack, I want you to tell Hamas that murdering Americans and sacrificing Palestinians for their war is wrong. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you. Mayor Johnson.
Good morning.
Wonderful to see you. As always, I love you, but I have to keep you accountable, and wonderful to see my wonderful companions across City Council. I love most of you as well. My name is David Zoltan. I am formerly unhoused, a proud member of the 49th Ward, and I'm here to speak to you in two capacities. First, in my capacity as the legislative coordinator for the Chicago Housing Justice Coalition, which is working on Just Cause for Eviction, and second, as a human being. We are preparing to have demands for budget season to keep all of you accountable and to help you in this process. We look forward to working with you. First and foremost, Mayor Johnson, you promised no increase in property taxes. Property taxes are a regressive tax. We must hold the line. We must not put the burden on the people. Let's work on other solutions. Other solutions like those that have started to be talked about by Alderman Hall and that we must continue to pursue. There are, in fact, many solutions, progressive revenue solutions that have been proposed, even talked about today. We must continue that process. We must pass Just Cause, which will keep people in their homes, and we must set aside the revenue that is necessary for that so that we can start to build revenue and have it be the revenue positive ordinance that it will be in 2026. We must also pass the South Shore Preservation Ordinance, which affects the people who are most evicted in this entire city, who are most at risk. And finally, I implore you, fire CEO Tracy Scott from the CHA and put somebody else in place. It is essential to ensuring the landscape ahead. Now on a personal note, I'm the grandson of the survivors of Auschwitz and the survivors of Freedom Fighters in Budapest. I was raised in the Jewish social justice tradition. My grandmother ran a resistance cell, an underground resistance cell, in Budapest to keep people alive, and from her, I learned that the only way to keep people safe is care and compassion, not war. We must, we must end the war in Gaza. We absolutely must move forward towards real solutions, towards peace. We must free Palestine and end the white supremacist Zionist movement and move towards ending Israel. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker this morning, our next speaker this morning is Michael Our next speaker this morning is Michael Siegel.
Mayor Johnson, members of the City Council, good morning.
Good morning.
I am Rabbi Michael Siegel. I am a resident of the 46th Ward. I am the senior rabbi of the Ansheamit synagogue, which just celebrated its 150th anniversary. This Friday night begins the holiest day on the Jewish calendar, Yom Kippur, and as part of the ritual, we will participate in a martyrology service. Eila escharah, the prayer begins, "These I remember." On October 7, we began this process, as we remember, 1,200 men, women, and children who were slaughtered on that day. More than 250 people taken hostage, many of them murdered. And of them, 35 Americans, all through the terrorism of Hamas. I'm here today to bear witness to the memories of the 35 American citizens who were murdered for being in the only Jewish state. I speak their names into the public record to do my part to ensure that they are not forgotten. Chaim Katzman, 32 years old, Lotan Abir, 24 years old, Deborah Mathias, Shlomo Mathias, Adrian Neta, 66 years old, Igal Watts, 53 years old, Amit Wax, 48 years old, Daniel Ben Senor, 34 years old, Rowi Weiser, 21 years old, Etai Glisco, 20 years old, Ari Shlomo Zierig, 27 years old, Daniel Waldman, 24 years old, Cindy Flash, 67 years old, Igal Flash, 66 years old, Jonathan Rome, 23 years old, Rose Lubin, 21 years old, Laura Abramov, 20 years old, Yana Kaminka, 20 years old, Carol Simontov, 70 years old, Johnny Simontov, 36 years old, Arbel Simontov, 5 years old, Shacher Simontov, 5 years old, Omer Simontov, 2 years old, and Hersh Goldberg-Polen, 23 years old. For all those whose names are not public, we lift their names in our hearts. Eila escharah, these I remember, and may all of the victims' memories be for a blessing. Zichronam livracha.
Our next speaker this morning is George Blakemore.
Listen, what is the definition of a Jew? Is it a religion, or is it a race? Now, when did this so-called Israel pop up? After World War II. America didn't want all of these people here, so they went to Africa. Everybody go back home to Africa, and they created a country they call Israel. All of this is Africa. Oh, they renamed it, they renamed it as the Middle East. That's Africa. The Jews, that's a black man religion. Islam, that's a black man religion. Hindu, all of these religions of the world come from the black man. So you all are being miseducated, uninformed, and unengaged. What, who are Jews? I'm a Jew. It comes from Ethiopia. All of that is Africa. You are being miseducated. So America, they say, "We don't want them all over here. We'll go to Africa, and we'll create a little state for them." So they talking about the blood, the sweat, the Holocaust. It's nothing like slavery, enslaved by the Europeans and other people. We are truly survivors of our Holocaust, born in America, brought to America, enslaved in America. Now, wait a minute, you got the right one. You got the right one. It's something inherently wrong here. It's waste, it's fraud, it's abuse, it's racism, all of these negative things. Why does this exist? This is a democratic cesspool, all Democrats, all 69 and each other, and they trying to put it on the back of this black man here. They've been picking out of who they want, the mayor, for the superintendents of these various departments, but now they want to change. So don't beat up on him. Beat up on yourself. All of you all are the problem because you're all Democrats. Now, look at this red hat. Go red.
Go red.
Go red.
Go red.
Do you know what a one-party system, it mean corrupt, fraud, and abuse? It's no check and balance. You know, I use the word 69, and all of them are Democrats. We need a multi-party system. It's not good to have all mamas.
Thank you very much for your comments. Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker this morning is Eric Winslow.
Okay, um, yeah, this is, um, the spirit, a higher power drove me here to talk. I ain't expect to talk, but, um, I wasn't expect to talk, but this is like something with some energy, because it's like a positive energy right here. And I'm speaking for, you know, the people that's, you know, I call, that everybody calls so-called blacks. So, um, I'm speaking from energy. I was told to speak up here. Let me see, take my time, only three minutes. We have to respect the so-called black people because they, my sources tell me, they are original from this land. It's a lot of stealing and tricking the people, the so-called blacks, taking advantage of, just taking their kindness for weakness. Like, I got original soul, and my fathers, my great-great-grandfathers, great-great-grandmamas, has like original soul. My study is that we let, my forefathers, my grandmamas, let people in, and we looked out for them at the kindness of our heart. And I feel like a lot of people is taking their kindness for weakness by not, they just taking their kindness for weakness, not looking out for their grand, their great-grandchildren and stuff like that. What is going on is just a lot of cheating and stealing, a lot of tricks. It's just a lot of tricks going on. And I'm speaking from a higher power just last week by Malcolm X College. I just be getting these signs, it was just a rainbow-shooting star. And that's, it's a lot of stories I got to put out in the book, but you have to respect us as a people. You can't cheat us, and you can't look for us to accept what y'all doing because people is hurting with the homelessness, mental illness, lack of jobs, and lack of respect and stuff. So, you know, y'all have to treat, you know, people come here, y'all have to treat the so-called blacks with respect, look out for them, help them out, and we gonna help expand as a people and help other people out in situation because we got good hearts, and that's what we do.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Yoshi Held.
My name is Yoshi Held. I am the proud resident of the 50th Ward. I'd like to thank the mayor, City Council, and especially my alderperson, Debbie Silverstein. Thank you so much for all that you do, for not just the Jewish community, but the greater Chicago community. I stand here 369 days after Hamas launched a horrible, horrific war against Israel, against innocent children, grandparents, Holocaust survivors, innocent civilians just sitting in their homes, 1,200 of which were slaughtered on that horrible Black Saturday in Israel. 250, over 250 hostages were taken, only 100 remain alive, lives lost, times lost, families shattered. But here I stand today, resolute that our City Council, our municipalities around the country, will do the right thing and stop this endless cycle of introducing unilateral ceasefires or calls on a democratically-elected state like Israel to cease and desist while Hamas, Hezbollah, and other agents of terror rearm. We cannot allow this to happen. We cannot allow this to happen in the city of Chicago ever again, and I think all the alderpersons here that voted against that horrible resolution. I also stand here as a proud member of the Jewish community, a long resident of the city of Chicago, a proud alumni of Ida Crown Jewish Academy, a proud Zionist. That word has often been misinterpreted, misused. It literally means the right of Israel to exist. So if anyone has a problem with being a Zionist, they have a problem with Israel's right to exist, and any manifestation of that word is misinformation. And that is something that the organization that I am the executive director for of the Midwest, it's called Stand With Us. We fight misinformation, antisemitism, and support Israel internationally. At the crux of a lot of the problems that we have in public society is misinformation, people talking past each other instead of to each other. I call on each and every one of our elected officials standing here today in our community and our great city to listen to each other instead of screaming past each other. I think we'd all find common ground if we just took the time to hear. And I'd also, I also stand here today as the proud grandson of Holocaust survivors. Never in a million years would I ever have thought that I would be reliving the horrors of their shared experience, but here we are today. What's different today is that I have the tools that I learned in high school and at the University of Illinois Chicago and through my work, that talking, learning, respecting goes a long way. We are all on this planet together for an extended period of time. Let's share it respectively, and let's free Gaza from Hamas.
Thank you very much for your comments. Your Honor, there are no further speakers who have time to sign up for the public comment period.
Thank you very much. Resolutions, before we attend to the resolutions, we do have a couple of alders who have requested to make some quick acknowledgements. So first, the chair recognizes Alder Haddon, Alder Haddon wishes to acknowledge our indigenous people. Alder Haddon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, everybody. Thank you, everyone, for attending. Just want to honor Indigenous Peoples' Day that's coming up on Monday, October 14. I know this isn't a holiday that we officially celebrate in the city of Chicago, but it is one that we celebrate in the 49th Ward. It is an official holiday we celebrate in Chicago Public Schools. With me in the gallery, we have the head of our Indigenous Peoples' Day Coalition here in Chicago, Les Begay. Les, I want to thank you for joining us this morning. In this acknowledgement, just going to read a line from our own land acknowledgement here for the city of Chicago. "The city of Chicago is located on land that is and has long been a center for native peoples. The area is the traditional homelands of the Ashanabey, or the Council of the Three Fires, the Ojibwe, Odawa, and Potawatomi nations." You can go on our website and read more, and encourage folks that in much of our discussions here in Chicago, as we work and strive towards equity, as we look at issues of segregation and disinvestment, we often talk about things in really simplified terms of black and brown and white and Asian, and so often, our First Nations people, our native peoples, our indigenous people are left out of the conversation. And we have to do better. So I know we've got strong and good intentions. I encourage my colleagues to work with members of the coalition, to connect with many of the organizations, and to remember that Chicago, Illinois, and the surrounding Chicago area is home to currently, right, not just historically, currently one of the largest native and indigenous urban populations in this country. So I want to thank all my colleagues for that and mayor for the acknowledgement.
Thank you very much. So also, for another recognition, it's International Day of the Girl, so Alders Haddon, as well as Lee, have brought this forward. Chair recognizes Alder Haddon.
Thank you, Mr. President. October 11 is International Day of the Girl, and this has been a day put forth internationally by the United Nations since 2011. But right here in Chicago, Lakeisha Gray-Sowell, executive director for the Girls Like Me Project, also with us here in the gallery today. Lakeisha, if you would stand. Her organization, the Girls Like Me Project, has been celebrating this here in Chicago since 2012. So last year, Mayor Johnson, you also helped proclaim Chicago's Day of the Girl, and we're excited to be here this year with a commitment as well from myself, my team, and I want to thank the chair of our Women's Caucus, Alderperson Lee, for working on this with us. We want to make this a day that grows, that builds on the work that Lakeisha and the Girls Like Me Project has done, to lift up our girls here in Chicago. Now, Lakeisha told me, we met on a panel on missing and murdered women in Chicago, and she told me that they started celebrating this because she realized that many of the young and adolescent women and girls that she was serving on the South Side of Chicago were facing the same issues that girls around the world. So we're talking about sexual and physical violence. We're talking about oppression, about repression of rights. We're talking about, you know, disinvestment. We're talking about sex trafficking, right? There are all these big things that around the world, girls face, but they face that right here in Chicago and in our country. And outside of the very large abuses and restrictions and violence that are done to us, we still struggle on a daily basis with the more insidious violence of misogyny, of patriarchy, right, of people in power, largely men, keeping us quiet, telling us to calm down, not letting us speak up, and this is about power. And so I'm excited to be a voice, a girl, with my other Women's Caucus colleagues. All of you are so strong. We have voices, we have experiences, we are leaders, and the Girls Like Me Project and International Day of the Girl is about our leadership and our voices. And while we're not always at the front of the line, taking all the limelight, trust that we are part of getting the work done. And I look forward to celebrating at the South Shore Chicago Cultural Center on Friday with 300 young women, that Lakeisha and her team are there, so that we can lift up our next generation of leaders. So we know that we don't have to be small, we don't have to be quiet, we can speak up, and we don't have to calm down. So I know our chair wants to speak, and I mentioned this, but Alderperson Dow, I believe Chairperson Dow also might want to say a word. Thank you.
Very well. Thank you, Alder Haddon. Alder leads since you brought, Alderwoman leads since you also brought this. Would you like to speak to this? Okay, of course.
Thank you, Mr. President. And obviously, I rise in support of
And obviously, I rise in support of this because I co-sponsored it. Just to echo what Chair Haddon was saying, it's great to be a girl. It really is. And nowhere, nowhere would I rather be than here with my fellow women members of the city council, with whom I've been so proud to serve, and look forward to continuing to work together to make things happen, move things, and do whatever it takes to get that done together, as I know that we can. Because who runs the world? All right. Thank you, sir.
Very well. For some final brief comments, the chair recognizes Alder Woman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was trying to stay within the lines, but I, very briefly, I just want to congratulate Lakeisha. I love the work that you do. I thank you for the work that you do in our communities. Black girl magic. Let's keep it going.
Very well. Thank you. I would just, the chair recognizes Alder Woman Silverstein.
I also have some people here that I'd like to acknowledge, if I may.
Okay. Let's, can we, can we finish these two resolutions? And I promise you, I'll come to you. Is that okay?
Thank you.
All right, you're very welcome. So for Indigenous Peoples' recognition, along with the Indigenous Peoples' Day for our Chicago Public Schools students, I think it's quite appropriate that we continue to lift up the contributions, the traditions, and the rich heritage of Native Americans, not just here in Chicago but across the globe. Chicago is home to the third-largest urban Native community in the United States, communities representing over 150 tribes. And so as we continue to celebrate and recognize the rich history of our Native American tribes, we have to continue to ensure that those traditions and culture and heritage continues. After all, of course, a black Haitian immigrant fell in love with a Potawatomi woman, which is still the greatest love story of all time, which makes us the greatest African city in the world. For International Day of the Girl, it's a very powerful testament to how far we've come as a, as a society, where for a very long time and in too many instances, girls, women are not seen and heard. I have the benefit of having come from a woman, a black woman. I have the benefit of sleeping with one black woman, and I have the joy of raising a black girl. Though sometimes I feel like she's raising me and making me better. What we have to do is to make sure that not just voices are heard, but that the valuable contributions that women bring to all aspects of discipline, that we continue to celebrate that. That's why 60% of my administration are made up of women, the largest concentration of women in administration in the history of Chicago. A good portion, of course, are women of color. By my administration, by this man, you are seen, heard, and your powers felt. Very well. I understand that before we move into the regular order of resolutions, we will take a moment for one more acknowledgement. The chair recognizes Alder Woman Deborah Silverstein.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just last week, the Jewish community celebrated Rosh Hashanah, the Jewish New Year. Normally, this is a time of joy and reflection, but this year has been anything but joys for the Jewish people. Two days ago, we marked one year since the October 7th massacre, which was the worst attack against Jews since the Holocaust. October 7th saw more than 1,200 innocent men, women, and children murdered. It saw babies and the elderly burned in their own homes. It saw women raped, mutilated, and subjected to horrific sexual violence. It saw more than 250 innocent people kidnapped and carried into Gaza to suffer in Hamas tunnels. Today, 368 days later, more than 100 of the hostages are still captive, including baby Kaffir, who was just nine months old when he was kidnapped. But the horror didn't end on October 7th. The tiny Jewish state is still fighting for its very existence on seven separate fronts and against internationally-recognized terrorist organizations such as Hamas and Hezbollah. Israel has been vilified on the international stage for daring to fight back against terrorism and extremism, while anti-Semitism, anti-Zionism, and hatred of Jews spreads like a cancer across the world and right here in Chicago. We've watched in horror of protesters in our city waved Hamas banners and wore the uniforms of terrorist organizations. We've seen students in our public schools and college campuses forced to hide their Jewish stars and suppress their Jewish identities out of fear of violence and retaliation. And we've heard members of this very council spew hatred and bigotry against the world's only Jewish state. That is why Israel is so vital to the ethical and moral character of the world. The modern state of Israel was founded as a safe place for Jews from around the world to flee persecution. And more than 30,000 Jews have immigrated to Israel since October 7th. 30,000 people fleeing spiking levels of anti-Semitism in France, the UK, and even America. That is the true Jewish response to terror. We mourn the dead. We cry for the innocent murdered and tortured by Hamas. We grieve, but then we rebuild and we grow. Because no matter what Hamas does, no matter what Hezbollah or Iran tries, Israel is not going anywhere, and neither are we. We will not break. We are joined here today by many Jewish residents and non-Jewish allies from the city of Chicago and surrounding suburbs. We are here as a united, strong community, and I want to recognize representatives from the following organizations. The JUF, ADL, AJC, Simon Wiesenthal Center, Stand With Us, Hillel's, AIPAC, Decalogue, FIDF, Ida Crown Jewish Academy, Anshe Emet Synagogue, Temple Shalom, Anshe Shalom, Kins of West Rogers Park, Chicago Sinai, KAM Isaiah Israel, Lakeshore Drive Synagogue, Kehilat Chlovovate Seon, Temple Beth Israel, Skokie Valley Agurath Jacob, Or Torah, University of Chicago Hillel, Northwestern Hillel, Metro Hillel, Emmanuel Congregation, Base Hillel, JFNA, Loop Synagogue, Chicago Rabbinical Council, Fossuman Yeshiva High School, and Quinton Road Baptist Church. Would all of you here please rise? Now, I ask for my colleagues to rise as well for a moment of silence for those murdered on October 7th, and a fervent prayer for the safe return of all of the hostages.
Thank you, Alder Woman Silverstein. Would the chamber, please, all rise for a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Thank you, Alder Woman Silverstein. Thank you to the alders for those resolutions. Now, we have three resolutions today commemorating Alder Woman Mary Ann Smith, recognizing domestic violence awareness, Prevention Month, and honoring Latinee Heritage Month. Alderman Mitchell for the temporary suspension of the rules.
Mr. President, I move for the temporary suspension of the rules for consideration of these resolutions.
Very well. Hearing no objections, so ordered. In the interest of respecting people's time, we will forego the reading of the resolutions and go straight to the remarks from members of city council. Our first resolution will be to commemorate Alder Woman Mary Ann Smith. Alder Manal Happenworth has asked to open up the remarks for this resolution. Is there a preference? I understand this is going to be one of the great debates. In my comments, it says that Alder Manal Happenworth wished to open, opened up the remarks. However, we recognize, you don't have to look so perplexed. I got it. So if it's okay, course correction, the opening remarks will come from Alder Lawson. Okay? And again, in the interest of time, I would just ask that you all, as colleagues, respect each other's times, and let's make sure that our, our comments and the time in which we speak reflect that respect. Alder Lawson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to give my strong support to this resolution today. I had the very good fortune of meeting Mary Ann Smith when I was 21 years old. I started a week after I graduated from Loyola University for State Senator Carol Ronan, who is here today. And had an amazing experience in the office of Senator Ronan, Alderman, Mary Ann Smith, she never used the term Alder Woman, and Congresswoman Jan Schakowsky, to learn from three powerhouse women in all levels of government who really knew how to get things done and take care of their neighborhoods. I learned a lot about life in that office, but certainly, I really liked what I heard over the wall that was happening in the Alderman's office. No offense to my federal and state friends, but my next job was with the city and I've stayed since. She was really a remarkable person who had the ability to bring people together in such a unique way. She was an early advocate for LGBT rights and proud that the 48th Ward was home to so many LGBT people and families. It was important that LGBT people were not just involved in their community groups, but were leaders in the community. Perhaps the best LGBT leader out of the 48th Ward being her longtime chief of staff Greg Harris, who I think may be watching us today. She was a voice for science-based, rather than fear-based HIV/AIDS public policy when it was not popular to do so. She fought for organizations serving our community and those providing services and care for people with HIV. She helped organizations purchase and renovate multi-unit properties for affordable housing and supportive services for people living with HIV, immigrants and refugees, working families, and seniors, often overcoming strong NIMBY opposition. She was creative and used landmark incentives to help boost housing and small business opportunities. She was a true local whore. She loved every new restaurant, lunch was there the next day, she shopped locally, and loved to lift up all the great things in her neighborhood. Her love of animals was on the next level. I think she only seemed to prefer the largest, hairiest, shaggiest, slobberyest dogs, who would sit right in the middle of the hallway and you'd have to walk over. Was one of them named Bear? Because it was like the size of a bear, right? I mean, it was, it was a calming impact on the office, but helped people relate, helped people feel at ease, helped people stay in line, I believe I heard, as well. She was protective of our elephants, right? That's why we don't have elephants at the zoo, because there's not space for them. And she led that charge, which is not popular at the time, but of course, the very right thing to do. Alderman Smith was the first person I've ever heard talk about walkable, transit-oriented communities, something that we all talk about constantly here today. That included the first traffic circles, speed humps to slow drivers down, and bike lights in the 48th Ward. In the early 2000s, there was a pilot in Andersonville to add bumpouts to what was becoming a thriving commercial district. And they did it in post and paint, so it was just sort of temporary. Businesses freaked out. Oh, we're gonna lose some parking spaces, nobody's gonna like it, it looks ugly. They made buttons that said, "Bump out, Mary Ann Smith." Can you imagine that this pilot from 20 years ago would be the envy of every streetscape we want now? We want to keep pedestrians safe. We want to maintain a thriving small business corridor, and we have to have the vision to do that. She spearheaded the installation of one of the first, of the first permeable alleys in her ward. I lived on one of those alleys, and it flopped. But we learned a lot. We learned a lot about materials, we learned a lot about drainage, we learned a lot about how this plastic was going to be reused, and we tried again, right? There was always a big idea, and she wasn't afraid to try everything. Rain gardens that divert water from the sewer system, and planted thousands and thousands of trees. Like far too many women serving in this chamber, and we are wearing purple and pink today, she was stricken with breast cancer during her service. And I know there were many women in the chamber who were a support to her, as she had been to them, along with the folks of the box and her circle in the 48th Ward. She beat it with determination and grace, and it's appropriate that we're honoring her on this day, obviously a huge supporter of all domestic violence victims and their issues in the 48th Ward. I feel so very fortunate to have learned from Mary Ann and had to watch her over me and my career as it grew. She knew, you knew she was proud of you because she told you. She didn't hold a lot back. And if she had, she thought you could do something a different way, she would tell you that too, in a great nudging maternal way. So today, in honor of Mary Ann Smith, I would ask everyone to maybe slow down a little bit in the car, be open to the offbeat idea, keep an eye out for our animal friends, and tell them, someone, you are proud of them, and really mean it. In addition to her sons, Matthew and Michael, she was mother to many of us in our 20s. I know Eden cares well, growing up as young people in the ward, and so many people. She had a really great power to connect people, and I know she will be missed by her family, by the support network in 48, and by all of us in the city. So on behalf of the residents of the 44th Ward, we send our deepest sympathies to the family and friends of Alderman Mary Ann Smith. Know that the many gifts she gave us are carried on by everyone she touched, especially this next generation of elected officials who can build on the extraordinary and visionary service she gave to our city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alder Woman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to be associated with this resolution. I first met Alderman Mary Ann Smith when I was a deputy commissioner for neighborhood planning for the city of Chicago, and I had an opportunity to meet with her quite often. She was a force of nature. She was someone that I would say was a workhorse, not a show horse. She was very committed to planning the whole entire neighborhood, not just looking at affordable housing or beautification or infrastructure improvements. She looked at everything, and I was pleased to work with her because she was one of the few Aldermen at that time, in my opinion, who really paid attention to what was going on in her ward. She was strictly focused on her area and on the lakefront. I recall that she had a passion for the work that she did. She had a great smile, a winning spirit, and she was just always warm and friendly. And when I became an Alderman in 2007 and she was still here, I had quietly suffered from a breast cancer episode, and she and Ginger Rougai embraced me and brought me along and allowed me to be more open about what was going on in my own life. I want to just thank the family for sharing her with us, and on behalf of the residents of the 3rd Ward, we offer our sympathy for her loss. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alder Woman. Chair recognizes Vice Mayor Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also rise and support this resolution. You know, and I concur with everything that has been said. I had the pleasure of working with Mary Ann, or meeting her, early on when I was in my 20s, actually, as a young Democrat and volunteering with the Cook County Democratic Party with George Dunn. She was always so nice to all of the young people. I think she's the I think she used to call me kiddo sometimes, which was a sign of affection. And then I had the pleasure and the opportunity to be able to work with her when I became Alderman in 1995. And she was one of the staunch advocates with myself and several other Aldermen, well, not several other, but a few of us, who stood firm and standing up for affordable housing during the Daleys administration. And she never, she never wavered on that, and I just want to thank her for all of her efforts, everything she has done in the City of Chicago. She always had that holistic and very conscientious way of governing, and she, she just, she's like a yoga person, right? She was always mellow, I mean, no matter what. You never really ever saw her get upset about much. So I just want to thank the family for sharing her with us. On behalf of the residents of the 27th Ward, we give our condolences to you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Scott Wagisback.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I also want to say from a personal experience and hearing what some of my colleagues have already said, I think those of us who served with her, I in my first term, had great personal experiences with Mary Ann Smith. We oftentimes would talk about things in terms of, you know, what can I do in my ward for open space? What kind of things could I expand on that the constituents really wanted to see? And I think at that time, with the traffic calming issues, as Alderman Lawson said, there, there were things that were coming into play at that time that were new to the city and new to constituents. And she was really at the forefront of kind of pushing those things out and providing something different for people to be safe and go to a park and have that open space that they might not have before. Open space impact fees, that was the first time I started talking about the need to raise those fees. And of course, it took a while to get there, but that was a concept that she was really pushing at the time. One of the other great things, I think, was banning, if I'm not mistaken, banning the smoking at our beaches. And if you remember the beaches back in the day, they would be full of cigarette butts and just nasty stuff, and it was really her efforts that led to making our beaches a lot better than what they used to be. And I think one of the most important things was whenever you walked into a meeting or talked to her about issues, as contentious as they might be, she was always very kind and talked through the issues with you, especially as a freshman Alderman in that first term with Mayor Daley. And she had a smile on her face that melted all the animosities that might be in the room. And to me, that was very important because it, it made the job a lot easier when you were coming in at a time when, when the city was a lot different. So I appreciate you, Mayor, for bringing forth this resolution on behalf of Mary Ann Smith, and I appreciate the family for being here and, and really just celebrating a life with us that was meaningful to me and I know to my constituents for the long term. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. So Alder Manal Happenworth is the final speaker. One more opportunity if anyone else wishes to speak. Okay, the Chair recognizes Alder Lee, Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be really brief. Incredibly, I actually had the opportunity to meet Alderman Mary Ann Smith while I served on the Board of the Chinese Mutual Aid Association in Uptown, and I know that she knew my father well as well. And the, the one interaction I had with her sticks out in my mind because I hadn't actually met another Alderperson at that point before, and I was struck with two things, just her presence, that she was sitting down with a community group, you know, again, first interaction with an Alderperson as an adult, and that she sat and she listened to the needs of the community and for an organization that served nothing but immigrants from everywhere around the world. It meant a lot to me to, to see her and to bear witness to her leadership. So I thank you all, her family and her friends, for sharing her with us in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Finally, the Chair recognizes Alder Manal Happenworth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for bringing this resolution forward to celebrate the life of Alderwoman Mary Ann Smith, and thank you all for being here. Mary Ann Smith served from 1989 to 2011, 22 years. She was a placemaker. As the Alderwoman of the 48th Ward, Edgewater and Uptown, she worked tirelessly and joyfully to preserve our unique neighborhoods, to protect the many identities of our community and to create public spaces that encourage people to gather and connect. She was a placemaker. She was the wife of late Professor Robert Smith, a mother of two boys, Michael and Matthew. She carried her love for her family into her work and built engaged communities from the ground up. She knew that well-used and maintained public spaces helped foster strong neighborhoods. She loved dog walkers, they were the eyes and the ears of the neighborhood. With the communities, she created three historic districts, expanded park space by Sen, and helped build the Edgewater Library, one of the busiest and well-loved libraries on the North Side. Mary Ann Smith was a placemaker. She lived in Uptown and Edgewater and believed that the diversity of the ward was important and something to preserve and celebrate. According to The Voice of the People, in addition to Chicago House that provided housing and services for HIV-positive and later trans folks, and the San Miguel Apartments that served HIV-positive and immigrant families, she also helped develop and fund a large number of affordable and supportive housing buildings in the neighborhood, including the Major Jenkins and Harold Washington SROs in partnership with Lakefront SRO, now Mercy Housing, the Leland Hotel, the Bryn Mawr and the Bell Shore Buildings, and the 28 Town Home International Homes Community with Voice of the People to give homeownership opportunities to working families and immigrant families in the Argyle Street area. Mary Ann Smith was a placemaker. Under Mayor Daley, she was sent to different cities to represent us at urban development conferences, but she knew that neighborhoods built by community for their own community were the strongest communities. When neighborhoods raised their voices about being a cut-through neighborhood for cars, she was the first Alderperson to build traffic circles and speed bumps to slow down traffic, and this helped contribute to the standards for pedestrian safety across the city today. Mary Ann Smith was a placemaker. She stayed active in her community until her final days. I had the honor and pleasure of working with her as a member of the 48th Ward Zoning Advisory Council, and she was in office as I was raising my children in Andersonville and Edgewater. They loved growing up in the neighborhood and being able to walk everywhere, going to the beach, going on public transit to and from schools, and just participating in everyday life of the neighborhood. And I hope that as young adults, I hope they'll consider coming back, because Mary Ann Smith would like that too. She would like to know that people would like to consider Edgewater and Uptown a place where they can live their whole lives. She paved the way for me to continue her work, to build strong and safe and caring communities, and we'll miss her, but we'll see her in the fingerprints that she left in our neighborhood and across the City of Chicago, everywhere and every day. Rest in peace, Mary Ann Smith, and thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you very much, Alderwoman Manal Happenworth. Thank you. So there's, there's something, something special about the Northwest side of Chicago where progressive, innovative leaders are born and raised, and certainly, you know, Mary Ann Smith is a part of that deep, profound tradition here in Chicago. So much so, has left an incredible legacy of leaders of like-mindedness who have come after her. So thank you for all of you who are in the box today, our sons and friends and family members, recognizing not just the 22 years of service, but what she stood for. You know, you think about affordable housing, something that we are still fighting for. Quality education, she was on the front line there for our students, something that we are still fighting for. Real, true, comprehensive community safety and preserving the history of neighborhoods and bringing businesses into our communities. She worked very hard to beautify her ward and make sure that we're preserving green space and open space. The beautification of, of Lake Michigan and the beaches, some of the most, you know, decorative spaces in the world, she saw them before others could recognize them. But, but what she was, you know, tirelessly advocating for was LGBTQ plus rights, at a time in which was, was almost unheard of, especially because of HIV/AIDS and how it was spreading through communities and what it meant to be bold at that time. I remember in the eighties in high school, and, you know, the most notable case that we know brought more attention to HIV/AIDS, and then, of course, how many black families were suffering. And she was on the cutting edge of making sure that we dismantle the myths and the fear, you know, around HIV/AIDS, but also making sure that business owners could set up shop and not be afraid of who they, who they are. You know, we, we often talk about just the bend and the arc towards justice. We don't talk about the people enough who actually bend the arc and create a curve that allows for the rest of us to ride around it a little bit smoother. Mary Ann did that. So with that, Alderman Mitchell, for this passage of this resolution, what a rising vote.
Mr. President, I move passage of this resolution by a rising vote.
Please stand, members of the, of the council. All right, as the members of the family in this box clear out, our next resolution And again, as we prepare for this second to last resolution, again, I appreciate all of those who have spoken, please make sure that we time our presentations in respect to others who wish to speak. Very well, I just hope that those members of the City Council are not building altars around Alderwoman Taylor. She's here, she's alive and well. Welcome back, Alderwoman Taylor. And so with that, our resolution recognizing Domestic Violence Awareness and Prevention Month, Alderwoman Taylor wishes to provide the opening remarks. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Taylor. I'm just telling you what my notes say. All right.
Okay.
If you wish to close, we can.
Can I close?
You very well. All right. Alderwoman Coleman, would you do us the honor in opening, opening up our comments for this resolution? The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Stephanie Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I definitely stand in support in recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, specifically I'm coming from as a black woman, whom we make up 16% of Chicago's population. However, we are a third of every domestic violence instances in any act of crime, even knowing what the amazing works of these women in the box today, how domestic violence calls have increased more than 12% since, since the pandemic, and how there's an estimated 40% of black women who will experience domestic violence sometime in their lifetime. In fact, they are two, two and a half times more likely to be murdered by men, men that they know, and over 90% of these homicides committed by someone that we as black women know. Even the Chicago Police Department have received over 57,000 calls directly associated with domestic violence, and those are the known calls, and there are so many women, black, white, brown, that are living in silo, that are living in fear for their lives because they don't want their partner to either leave them or abuse their children. I want to thank Chairman Hopkins, who will have a special hearing, and I hope you ladies can join us on October 23rd, as we will bring light to not only domestic violence that is impacted by black women, but all women in the City of Chicago as well as missing girls. I want to thank Chairman Gil Villegas, he's not a black woman, however, he was able to connect myself and members of the Women's Caucus to this subject matter, as well as my partners Dorothy Tucker and Chicago Urban League President Karen Wilson Freeman for being staunch advocates for domestic violence and violence against black women. Thank you, Mr. President. Your office has been amazing in helping us shed light, because this has never been an important issue, it seems like, to the city, but certainly an issue that your administration is shedding light on the City of Chicago.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Mike Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to the sponsors of this very important resolution. You know, I had the distinct pleasure of meeting with folks from the Domestic Violence Network and from the Chicago Alliance Against Sexual Exploitation just recently to talk about the City of Chicago budget. And we know that our efforts on this issue are not where they need to be, and we need to further strengthen our city's work in this area. You know, I think about the fact that not, several blocks away from my home, about, not too long ago, a woman by the name of Karina was murdered by her husband, and her daughter was murdered in this same incident. Her son was shot in this incident, and we know that there's state legislation that we speak of now called Karina's Bill, that's sponsored by my sister, Selena Villanueva, my brother Edgar Gonzalez, and I'm very hopeful that that effort to strengthen our, our efforts at the state level when it comes to firearms and firearm restrictions and domestic abusers, I hope that those efforts here at the city and the state that we're able to further act as a government on behalf of the victims of domestic violence, but more importantly, to work to prevent the incidence of domestic violence, that we know that during the pandemic grew, and today we know that we need to do everything in our power to create public safety in our homes and on our streets. And I'm very much committed with my colleagues, both at the state, the county, at the federal level, but here at City Council, to address this most urgent of needs. I thank you for raising this issue and working day in and day out on this very, very important issue. It's not lost upon me that my mother worked on this issue every day of her life as a rape victim advocate. I thank you and I commend you for all of your work, and I stand with you every day in my work. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. The Chair recognizes Alder Laspada.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'm glad for this resolution. I support this resolution. I want to be a part of a council that talks about gender and domestic violence for more than just 30 to 45 minutes in October, and then next October, we'll talk about it again. Because that should be unacceptable to every person in this box. I'm sorry to feel I have a lot of anger in my system because talking about this issue makes me angry and should make all of us angry. The, the girls that we so rightfully celebrated about 45 minutes ago, 40% of those girls will grow up to experience domestic and gender-based violence in their lives. 40% of them will be pushed, slapped, shoved, strangled, shot by a domestic partner in their lives. Alderman LaSpata, I couldn't agree with you more. This is not something we should just be talking about for a few minutes in October. Domestic violence is an issue that plagues our country and no less here in the city of Chicago. To each and every one of you in the box for all the work that you're doing, for all that you have survived, and all that you do every day to support the victims of domestic violence, I thank you. I think it's really important for us to remember also that we have to take actions as well. This is not just about a few nice words of support right now, but it is what in our actions will show you that we care and that we recognize the role that gender-based violence plays in community violence, and that it is an important place for us to look and continue to support. So I appreciate the work that the mayor's office has continued to do with the working group, with the survivor networks, and really want to impress upon myself and my colleagues as we're going into budget season, that this is not a place that we can afford not to support. So I'll go on record on that, too. This is a very important issue, and it's one that is vital to the public safety of our entire city, and I implore everybody to make sure that we're keeping an eye on this. Thank you very much, and thank you to all of you that are doing the work.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alder Haddon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you all for being here. It's wonderful to see you. Like many of my colleagues, I'll just say thank you for all the work that you do every day. A plus-one to everyone's comments who's already spoken, and you know, obviously, as my colleague Alderman LaSpata was mentioning, as we were celebrating Day of the Girl coming up on Friday, I did mention that, you know, Laquisha and I met at a panel where we were speaking about missing and murdered women. And I'm really excited, thanks to the leadership of our Black Caucus Chairwoman, Stephanie Coleman. I know she's led us, and I'm excited that Alderman Hopkins is holding this special meeting for us in the next couple of weeks, where we're going to dive into the topic of missing and murdered women. Specifically, you know, we need to move past nice words, and I know actions speak louder than words. So plus-one to my colleagues' call for making sure that we have continued investments in our budget, right, for our survivors in this budget. I'm proud to be a part of the council, and we as a council should be proud of our investments over the last several years, under Mayor Johnson, under Mayor Lightfoot, of really making this a priority, and we're going to keep that positive trend going. And also, I encourage folks to come to the hearing, where we're going to hear from Pulitzer Prize-winning reporters about how our police department is not making our missing murdered women and girls a priority, how these stories are being shoved aside, how these cases are being closed with no explanation. And again, our actions speak louder than words. So we can talk about how we prioritize and want to protect our women, but we need to do things here in the city of Chicago that actually start doing it. So I thank you all for the work that you do and including us in the partnership for that. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. The chair recognizes Alder Carlos Ramirez Rosa. Okay, the chair recognizes Alder Andre Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also rise in support of this resolution. Although we're here recognizing it, we also should recognize that this shouldn't be something that we're talking about. We should be working hard enough to work you all out of a job for all the work that you do. We often talk about the gender-based violence part of it, but I don't think we talk enough about the children as well. I think there are a number of us here who probably would be hesitant to admit that we're victims of domestic violence, that we grew up either because we're first generation or because of religion and saying that you shouldn't spare the rod, and recognizing that when people don't know how to have conversations, even with their children, and they do beat their children, it leads to further consequences generations down the line. Some of these men who should be held accountable, it should also be understood, are in some regard plagued by their own toxic masculinity and programming and this idea that the way you solve problems is by using a fist or a hand or something else or a belt. And so I think often, we don't admit it. I know I grew up getting beaten more often than I can care to admit, and so I believe we need to have that conversation. Also, our ward experienced a number of incidents this year. We lost Jaden Perkins for defending his mother, Lataria Smith, because of someone who actually tried to get a restraining order and tried to have the court system do what they're supposed to do and was left defenseless. We also stood up for Dominique Ward, who, when she was coming to the city of Chicago and the CPD saying, "Someone's stalking me online, someone's harassing me online, it was not recorded properly, there's a lot of things that our city could do better." And so although we recognize that there's a lot of work to do, it shouldn't be just this day, it should be every time we see these stories. It should be holding the police department accountable to do what they need to do as well, and also investing in the kind of mental health and support and family support services that keep people from dealing with their own trauma in a way that harms others and multiplies this through generations. So please hold us accountable to make sure that we do everything possible to work you all out of a job. I know y'all gotta get paid like everybody else, but we prefer, and I'm sure you all would prefer, not to have to do this work, and you have our commitment to continue working on supporting your efforts. Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. There's one more person to recognize, two more now, before Alderwoman Taylor closes. So with that, the chair recognizes Alder Byron Sexto Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I also would like to rise in support of this resolution. I know my colleague Alderman Rodriguez mentioned the tragic case in Little Village not too long ago, and the need and the urgent need for action at every level of government to prevent these cases of domestic violence and abuse that way and far too often happen in our neighborhoods and our communities. This intra-community and intrafamiliar violence replicates throughout our neighborhoods if we do not act as such, with the legislative bodies focusing on solutions. I tell you that this tragic case in Little Village is even more tragic, because it could have been prevented. As the chair of the Housing Committee, I see with great concern that many victims of violence and domestic violence oftentimes do not find shelter as one of the primary reasons as to why they cannot leave the perpetrator, and furthermore, the continuous cycle of violence that our children are learning. We need to stop these vicious cycles of violence by investing in solutions. We know that investing in shelters, investing in organizations like Mujeres Latinas en Acción, with decades of experience in our community, will do a lot to save lives. We know that works. And I hope that our budget, and I want to thank Mayor Johnson for addressing the root causes of violence, the lack of investment in our schools, the lack of investment in shelter, the lack of investment in our communities, as a result of so many tragedies that can be prevented. So I rise in support, and I'm glad to see also the Gender-Based Violence Task Force expanded. We do need more voices, we do need more advocates, and we do need more elected officials at the state and the local level, working together for solutions. Like my colleague Alderman Rodriguez mentioned, I do expect the state also to work with us on solutions, not only legislatively, but also with funding that is so desperately needed, so that we can address these unfortunate and tragic cases. So again, my support, and as the chair of Housing, again, I want to recognize Mujeres Latinas en Acción, but everybody on the box for your advocacy, dedication, and commitment to make sure that our city of Chicago invests in solutions and prevention to keep our most vulnerable and our women and our children safe. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. So I have Alders Lopez and Conway before Alderwoman Taylor closes. With that, the chair recognizes Alderman Raymond Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good afternoon, members of the city council, and welcome to our guests. I, too, rise in support of this resolution, and I thank you, Mayor, for your efforts to raise awareness about domestic violence. Domestic violence comes in all forms. I can tell you, as someone who saw my own mother in an abusive relationship, it's easy to tell people that they can get through it. It's easy to think that there are options. It's easy to think that the children will be okay, and I can assure you, none of that is easy. Now more than ever, we have seen where domestic violence not only perpetuates the pain and suffering of families, of spouses, of boyfriends and girlfriends, of children, but it's deadly, more deadly, I think, than I've ever seen it. I remember on the southwest side, the young mother, Adriana Lopez, killed on Narragansett Avenue, coming home because her state trooper boyfriend waited for her and gunned her down on the street as she came home. Everyone knew he was a danger, but nobody in the system did enough to keep her safe. Her family was devastated, the school she taught at, the children were devastated, the community as a whole on the southwest side was devastated. That is a story that has repeated itself far too often across far too many communities. We talk about state action and getting our partners, but let's call out what's been sitting and not done. Karina's Bill would be a nice start. The Homicide Victims Families Rights Act would be another, and the Homicide Data Transparency Act would be a third, all of which are introduced, all of which have languished, and all of which, for whatever reason, in Springfield are not moving forward. I don't know what it's going to take for our legislators to understand lives are literally on the line right now. The options for people suffering from domestic violence and the hope that some rinky-dink piece of paper is going to keep them safe from someone who's bound and determined because of their own mental deficiencies to obey that order of protection is foolish to think that we have enough in place. We have to do better. We owe it to everyone in this state, but in particular in this city, to demand better. And as we look towards the veto session, I encourage this body, and hope my colleagues will consider, making that demand of Springfield, demanding that we protect the most vulnerable among us when they have the least amount of security, the least amount of protections. Yes, we offer a $1,000 payment, and I think that's a wonderful thing, Mr. President, but to a woman with four kids trying to find somewhere to go, a one-time payment of $1,000 is nowhere near enough. Someone trying to tell them, a young man in a relationship, to leave, not enough. Even one of the most basic things of what to do with pets, still unresolved, but also one of those things that keeps people in these relationships far longer than necessary. There are common sense things that we can do here, that we can advocate, and that we should go down to Springfield and demand as well, and I look forward to our efforts to accomplish that. I guess, by definition, since my mother was a domestic abuse survivor, that makes me one, too. I was the kid. I was the stepson that was attacked. I was the stepson that was thrown out on Christmas Eve into the snow while my mom was out. I know what that's like. I know what it's like to have people who just don't know how to leave. We need to do everything we can to make sure that people don't have to think about how to do this, that it's there for when they need it, that the options, no matter what the relationship type, no matter who it is or who has to go, that those protections are there, because nobody should have to grow up and stay in those kind of relationships. No one should have to feel that they are compelled because of children or because of living or because of any other issue. We can do better, and I hope that this is one of many steps to get us down that path together. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to thank you all for advocating for victims of domestic violence. I also want to add a thank you to Alderman Lopez for sharing your personal story on this as well. So the first job I had at a law school was, I was at the Cook County State's Attorney's Office as a prosecutor, and the first courthouse I was assigned to was at 555 West Harrison. It was a brand-new courthouse at that point in time, and we would do the general misdemeanor call kind of in the morning, and then in the afternoon, the general misdemeanor prosecutors would go and help out the domestic violence prosecutors kind of down the hall there. And we would meet with victims of domestic violence, and more often than not, they didn't want to go forward with their domestic battery complaints at that moment in time. And I remember how frustrating it was for us as prosecutors, I remember how frustrating it was for the police officers that had to get involved in this situation, in these situations, and obviously, that was close to 20 years ago, but it's obviously an issue that persists to this very day. So again, I want to thank you all for what you're doing for victims of domestic violence and encouraging them so that they don't have to live a life of silent pain and shame. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Wagisback.
Thanks, Mr. President, and importantly, today, we thank all of the advocates both in the box today, but especially all those who are still out in the field working as we speak here today. I appreciate this resolution, and I deeply appreciate my colleagues who have spoken on this issue and know that this is something that we have to work on, not just in October, but throughout the year. We have to build on, I think, the successes that started just a few short years ago. We have to have dedicated funds, though, as the ARPA funds run out. We have to have dedicated staff, and this is something that I think everyone in this room knows, we have to commit to that over the next several years to really tackle this issue in a meaningful way. We need more opportunity to work with our partners at the state, as my colleague mentioned as well, and with the federal government, because it is there, I think, where we'll see those funds, where we'll see the partnerships that really allow us to grow here in the city and tackle these issues that we see every day. So I just want to say thank you for all the work that you've done, and it is critical work, it's laudable, it's painful, but I think what it brings to the people who need it the most out there is a feeling that they are being watched over and helped in any way that they can. It is you who are doing that work, and I appreciate it. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, and as you wish, for the final, for the close, the chair recognizes Alderwoman Jeanette Taylor.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. President, and importantly today, we thank all of the advocates both in the box today, but especially all those who are still out in the field working as we speak here today. I appreciate this resolution, and I deeply appreciate my colleagues who have spoken on this issue and know that this is something that we have to work on, not just in October, but throughout the year. We have to build on, I think, the successes that started just a few short years ago. We have to have dedicated funds, though, as the ARPA funds run out. We have to have dedicated staff, and this is something that I think everyone in this room knows, we have to commit to that over the next several years to really tackle this issue in a meaningful way. We need more opportunity to work with our partners at the state, as my colleague mentioned as well, and with the federal government, because it is there, I think, where we'll see those funds, where we'll see the partnerships that really allow us to grow here in the city and tackle these issues that we see every day. So I just want to say thank you for all the work that you've done, and it is critical work, it's laudable, it's painful, but I think what it brings to the people who need it the most out there is a feeling that they are being watched over and helped in any way that they can. It is you who are doing that work, and I appreciate it. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, and as you wish, for the final, for the close, the Chair recognizes Alderwoman Jeanette Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Imagine being a 16-year-old girl and the man that you love blacks both of your eyes. Imagine not getting any order protection against him because he is your child's father. Imagine the police asking you, what did you do to deserve that? Imagine having to take pictures of your eye to prove that you were beating. That person is me. And so for the last seven years, the Kenwood Oakland Community Organization, along with young ladies from Move On the West Ave, had did a walk called We Walk For Her, and that is every year they do a walk with elected officials, people from the community, to talk about domestic violence. Imagine looking at the FBI numbers, and the numbers for black women are so high that they add white women and Latino women together, and those numbers still don't compare. That is the type of city and country we live in where it is okay for us to go missing, and the first thing you say is, well, did they run away? Did you have an, did you all have an argument? They'll be back tomorrow. It's never in the time. And even to go even personal, before I sat in this seat, there was an elder in my community named Daisy Hayes. Her partner killed her, put her in a suitcase, and rolled her out the building, and it's all on camera. And that family has yet to find her body. So imagine mourning somebody whose body you never had. That is the type of system we live in. And so I want to thank Alderman Brian Hopkins for agreeing to have this conversation. I want to say I have gotten a commitment from the Mayor of City of Chicago and Superintendent Snelling for us to create a task force and to put money into that budget so that we do a better job at looking for these women. To the women in the box, thank you for your work, thank you for your time, thank you for your commitment. And it is not just women who go missing. We don't even hit the male numbers, which are just as high when it comes to black and indigenous people. And so we got work to do. And Alderman Lopez, I agree, it can't be paperwork. It is actually us having to get up and look for these folks. Think about the postal worker who was pregnant, who is still missing. How many missing people we see on Facebook and social media every day, and we do nothing. That has to change, and so I'm grateful to support this resolution, but say, let's get the work done. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Thank you to all that are in the box who, who work tirelessly on behalf of so many families across this city and this region. You know, we, you're, you're, all of you are absolutely right, we do come together every month, every October this month, and, you know, we celebrate those who survive domestic violence. We, we are grateful for their road to recovery and healing. We also mourn those that we have lost. We do have to continue our work to end violence. You're absolutely right, Alderwoman Taylor, it's, it's one in four women who experience partner violence within a relationship, but it's one in seven men. And we, we see the systemic racism and inequities that exist because there are higher rates of domestic violence with Black, Brown, and the LGBTQIA+ communities. So we're working hard to combat domestic violence in Chicago, partnering with DFSS too. As you all have expressed, we have to increase funding for the Survivor Fund and Emergency Fund and Gender-Based Violence Survivors. So we've expanded our task force, 21 members, offering more diversity and a wide range of voices and experiences, because that is what ultimately is going to help deliver justice, when we have those who are closest to the pain can actually be a part of the solutions. And so roundtables and community meetings and legislation and funding, it's going to take all of those efforts to ensure that we create a world that is free of domestic violence. With that, the Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell. Can we get a motion for the passes of this resolution?
Mr. President, I move passes in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. And now for our final resolution, let's please recognize and give another round of applause for those who are in the box today. As the individuals in the box clear out and as we bring in the next group of individuals that will be recognized, let me just express my gratitude for all of you timing your presentations Very well, as the members of, from the various Latine communities find themselves situated in the box, again, just want to remind people that in respect of your colleagues' time, respective times, let's just make sure that our presentations are concentrated and direct. So with that, this final resolution celebrating Latine Heritage Month, which, which does come to a close on October 15th, and we are grateful again for all of those in the box who have joined us this morning. With that, are there any individuals that wish to go first? Okay. The Chair recognizes Alderman Mike Rodriguez.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I, I rise to be associated with this resolution because it is the right thing at the right time for la gente cósmica. The Latino community is all of us. The fact is, we come in all shades of brown, we represent all parts of this great world, and we live in all parts of this great world, and we are the backbone of this great city. I know for one, we have in the box some folks from my community of La Vila, who I'm very, very proud of. They're leaders on the migrant mission in violence prevention, they're entrepreneurs, they've been brought here at a very young age, and they're documented, meaning that they were brought here to this country at a very young age, but are every much as American as anyone else. And our country needs to do better by our migrant brothers and sisters, needs to do better by our brothers and sisters who are considered a commonwealth when it comes to great tragedies. We need to do better by all people, but the fact is, I'm very happy to support the recognition of this month, because our city's backbone really is our all of you. You are our leaders. I'm so happy that the Fifth Floor asked each of the Latino Alders to ask for one individual from your community to be a part of this. So you really represent the whole city of Chicago and the greatness that the Latino community brings to our city. Our diaspora from a diverse number of American nations, because we come here as Americans, we represent all of South, Central, and North America, right? We are all Americans, and that's what makes this city so great, that we come together, we live together, we work together, we eat together, we love together, and I'm so very proud to stand up and be associated with Latino Heritage Month. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alder Julia Ramirez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am so proud to be Latina, Hispanic, Mexican, all of those things, and I'm looking around the box and see some very familiar faces. Thank you for all that you've done for our community, for our history, for making us so proud to be in spaces like these and being uplifted from all the work that you guys do. I want to recognize the person that I brought into City Council today. Her name is Carmela Vargas. She is the president of the Mexican Patriotic Club in the 10th Ward. Please give it up for Carmela. I'm going to be throwing around a lot of numbers, but there's three really big points that I want to hit. I want to hit about her devotion, her leadership, and her legacy. I want to talk about her devotion to her family. Her son happens to be my ward superintendent, and Dave Vargas has served the city of Chicago for 25 years. I'm very grateful for all of his service. Carmela has six children, and she has beautiful grandchildren that I've had the opportunity to meet. So Carmela, through the Patriotic Club, she has this special dinner where she gets scholarship money for 10 recipients, and they have all these young ladies participate in becoming queen for the whole year in representation of Mexico, and her granddaughter actually won last year. I also want to recognize her daughter-in-law, Stephanie. As I was interviewing her, she talked a lot about having gone to the longest-standing Mexican parade in competition with the 22nd Ward. The Mexican parade in the 10th Ward has been longstanding for 85 years, and Carmela's story is part of that Mexican parade. There was a time in the early 90s where a lot of folks that were living on the southeast side of Chicago, they were losing jobs, and so they had to move, and membership in the Patriotic Club had gone down. So Carmela just showed up because she just knew that she wanted to do something and she wanted to help, and ever since that day, she has been there for 34 years. And I think that's like a part of like a lot of our stories, right? We just show up and we want to help, and then we find a home and we find a community, and now she is the president. And so I'm so honored to, to acknowledge you today and thank you for everything that you've done, and I just want to say with all those numbers, like, your legacy is going to live on amongst so many people, among so many years, and the city of Chicago is truly indebted for the work that you've done for the Mexican community. So thank you so much, Carmela Vargas.
Chair recognizes Alderman Chico.
Thank you. As the elected official from the 10th Ward who represents the oldest Mexican community in the city of Chicago, and as the first Mexican alderman from the 10th Ward, I take that responsibility with great pride. And while my colleagues from the 12th Ward invited you today, I still want to show you some praise and love. Carmela and her husband, Dave, work hard at the Mexican Patriotic Club, a club that started in the 1930s and is still going well today. Like my colleague said, we just celebrated the 85th Parade on Commercial Avenue, and it was more vibrant than ever, one of the biggest crowds I've seen in recent memory. But in addition to that, scholarship dinner, the Cinco de Mayo educators luncheon, the things you do for our community is not so unknown. I also have some representatives from the Malo Club, the Mexican-American Leadership Organization. George and Roger, thank you for the work you do. Toy drives, backpack giveaways, scholarships, sponsoring youth for sports. But what I'm most excited about is the partnership created between the Patriotic Club and the Malo Club. That partnership makes the 10th Ward stronger each and every day. It's something that you make my job easier too as well, so thank you for that. These groups work together, speak to the identity of not only Latinos in the 10th Ward, but the entire city, hardworking, humble, and willing to help their community. So once again, thank you for the work you do, thank you for your partnership. I look forward to many more years of dedication to the 10th Ward. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alder Laspada.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Very proud to stand in support of this resolution, and I'll just briefly call out one person who's in the box and one person outside of it. Gary, Gary Jimenez, I see you back there. Gary is a housing organizer with Palenque LSNA. Gary, I'm so proud and grateful to have you as a collaborator, as a partner, as someone who brings accountability and imagination to the work for housing justice in the communities that we both serve. It was almost 20 years ago I first got involved with LSNA through a housing organizer, organizer much like yourself, and when I see the leaders you're bringing up now, I'm excited for where they're headed, and I'm just as excited for wherever you're headed. And I also wanted to call out and celebrate Angel Rubi Navarro. Angel, the journey that you took to become a commissioner on the CCPSA Commission was a long one, and it was a hard one, and anyone would have excused you, and you would have been justified if you thought that that was a path worth stepping off of. And I am so grateful, if you hear this, for your courage and your persistence to get where you are, because the Latino community needs and deserves representation on that commission. So thank you very much, thank you to everyone in the box, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alder Jesse Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too stand to be associated with this resolution. When I think about Hispanic Heritage Month, I often think about the neighborhoods that raised me but often are growing in the city of Chicago. Latinos have made major contributions to the cultural aspects of the city of Chicago. I have the great privilege of representing the 26th Ward, the Puerto Rican bedrock of the city of Chicago. I mean, we have the two largest Puerto Rican steel flags anywhere on the world, including Puerto Rico. But we have informed everything about our neighborhood, architectural design, small businesses, arts and culture, even education. And when we think about Latino communities across the city of Chicago, we have done just that. We are the fastest-growing ethnic population in the United States, the fastest-growing ethnic population in the small business sector, and we continue to break glass ceilings all across the country. I mean, even including in this very chamber, we have 15 elected Latinos sitting here today, including Madam Clerk, Ana Valencia. We continue to make contributions to who we are as a people because of many different reasons. The colonial realities of our islands in the Caribbean, or national policies that have created borders that cross people, not people crossing borders. We have stripped land from people. We have uprooted individuals, not just from nations across the globe, but from neighborhoods in this very city. I mean, Puerto Ricans started on La Salle and Clark Street, moved our way to Lincoln Park, Lakeview, Wicker, Bucktown, and now we're in Humboldt, and we're sort of watching that same process of urban renewal and gentrification, seeking to displace a people again. And so we've done what we've always done best, is organize, create policy to root ourselves and our community, to create a better future for the future generation, and we continue to see that with many Latinos across the globe coming to the city of Chicago. And so I thank every Latino in this room that's an elected official, because we all make a sacrifice to represent our people, not just in the wards that we live in, but the nations that we come from. There are so many countries, pueblos, barrios represented right here in this chamber, and we are, our ancestors, wow, their dreams come true. And we do that beyond celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month once a year. There is an individual in the box that I want to pay a special tribute to, because there are unsung heroes in our communities everywhere, and Jose Echeverria Cebedo, known to us as Gringo, is one of them. Gringo, raised in Humboldt Park, right in the bedrock of the Puerto Rican community, is known for his contributions to arts and culture in our community, popularly known for his choreograph and leadership of the All-Stars dancers, one of the most recognized house music groups. house music groups in the city of Chicago. You see, we make contributions everywhere. I wasn't kidding. Gringo has been able to not just save young people's lives on the dance floor, in a studio, and in the streets, but he has become a model of what it means to be a Latino man that is vulnerable, that is patient, that is a leader for people who he represents in the Puerto Rican community, but for young people all across the city. There are people who have taken anger, sadness to the stage because of people like Gringo, and he has been able to document that in several of his books. And so today, I wanted to bring an unsung hero to the box, someone that many of our young people think, look up to, and continue to call even as they have moved on in their careers to other spaces. So Gringo, thank you for the contributions you've made, not just to the city of Chicago, but for every young queer, Boricua across Humboldt Park and the city. It is because of people like you that we are very comfortable to be in our skin. So I thank you for all that you do. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderwoman Ruth Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also stand in support of this resolution. I am proud to stand here as a Mexican immigrant. And I want to recognize today our deep contributions to our Hispanic community, from our rich cultural traditions to our resilience. And one example today is Angel Rubio Navarrijo for never giving up and pursuing his dreams and fighting hard for what he wanted. Also, our hard work. We work as Mexicans, I want to talk about in, you know, my family and my community, we're hardworking individuals. We work everything we possibly can to provide for our families. But because of the work, we have shaped the fabric of this city and this nation. Today, I also want to take the moment to give a special thank you to someone from your administration, Claudia Guzman, for doing everything she possibly could to have the right raising of the Mexican flag, for working with the Illinois Hispanic Chamber of Commerce to have El Grito, and how did we bring community together and give them the space that we needed to celebrate. Both were able to accomplish that. So I want to thank both of them for working together to bring our celebration and share who we are as a culture and as a community, and really showcasing a positive message of what we really are. But also today, I want to honor somebody who is extremely special to me, and I'll try not to cry. But I want to honor Hilda Frontani. Hilda, please, yes. I'm honored to recognize Hilda Frontani for her remarkable leadership and unwavering commitment to uplifting our communities. For more than 20 years, she has fought for the rights of women, immigrants, and non-English speakers, advocating for affordable housing solutions to prevent the displacement of low-income families. Her dedication is reflected in her service as the honorary chair for the Board of Directors at Ricon Family Services, where her leadership continues to make a lasting impact. Hilda, you are an angel to me. I love you. Thank you for embracing me, giving me the support that I needed. So I will always be grateful and honored to call you my friend. So thank you for being here, everybody who's in the box. I wish I can say everybody about something of you, but thank you for representing our community. Gary, a young man, Palenque continued for doing the work. Also, my friend Vilma Colon, who is here, Julieta from the Saca Foundation, which she does an outstanding job running the shelter that we have in the northwest side, being in the 30th Ward. So thank you for all the work. Y que viva México. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderman Villegas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also, Mr. President, rather, I also stand to be associated with this resolution. When you look in that box, you see tons of shades of brown, from your light-skinned Latinos to your Afro-Latinos. And I tell you that it's a story that I'm very proud to be associated with. I do want to give a special, a couple of special acknowledgements to the first Latina alderwoman in Vilma Colon. Who, as you can imagine, led the effort. And not the last, that's correct. As you can see, we have many that are here now, thanks to your, thanks to your leadership. But she led the efforts around making sure that Logan Square was affordable. And we appreciate you for that. And then second person would be George Berciaga, who's the CEO of Smart Cities and a partner with me on the Chicago Technology Task Force. And we look forward to collaborating and working together with the administration to figure out how we can find tech solutions to create savings but create revenue. So just wanted to, you know, again, stand up and just say how proud I am to see, to see the diversity within that box. And que viva Puerto Rico.
Chair recognizes Alderman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. Also, rise in support of this resolution. Definitely, I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge my salsa partner when she was here in the city council, Alderman Vilma Colon, who was always in the trenches with me when we fought for affordable housing. But I'd be remiss also if I didn't acknowledge Hilda also. It seemed like, Hilda, I've known you all my life, man. It's like everywhere I've been, you've been there. So we just want to commend everyone that's in the box. Thank you all for all your contributions, not only to the city of Chicago, but also to your culture. George actually is one of my, he's one of the ones that I chose. So thank, first of all, I want to thank you all for allowing me to choose a Hispanic to be up there, okay? But George is a former resident of my ward, but also he's a good Christian guy. Matter of fact, him and Ana Valencia go to the same church with my son. They have Sunday School sessions every week, you know, all of those great things. But George also is a, he's an ambassador for the city of Chicago, whether you know it or not, Mayor. He's an ambassador for the city of Chicago. He's involved with mayors all around this country. He has been an advisor to many mayors throughout this country. Matter of fact, there's not a month that goes by when George don't call me and say, I got Mayor such-and-such here. You want to meet him? And he's always inviting me to meet a mayor. And whenever I go to any of these conventions in regards to the mayors, they all know George. He's a, he's a good contributor to the city of Chicago. He advises us. He helps us with best practices that are going on around the country. He shares them with us from things that he learned. So I just want to commend and thank you, George, for all of your service. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alder Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise proudly to be associated with this resolution. As the vice chair of the Latino Caucus, I can't be prouder to see all of you all here. I think if you look at our Latino Caucus, you can see that there is a complete spectrum, whether it be what we all look like, how we think, our ideologies, there's a little bit of everything. And I think even in that, there's a shared experience. A lot of the folks here, I would wager, had either gone through the experience of having somebody look at us and say, I don't like the accent, or learn English, or our parents got to see that when we were young, and really understanding what it's like to be othered. We've definitely had that. To my colleague, Alderwoman Fuentes' point, we've moved all over this city. I remember being in Milwaukee and Damon before it was what it looks like now. I remember being in Logan Square before what it looks like now. I remember going to North and Keeler and everywhere else, just trying to find our community, knowing that we have our own differences, but still trying to find a way to come together. I remember the parades at Little Village or the PR Fest back in the day. And it all adds to who we are. There's a spread. I think when you look at our community in the U.S. and you look at the history, we're a little bit of everything. We're descended from Africa, like our black brothers and sisters. We've got Asian blood from when they came over to the continent. We're indigenous. We've also had the Europeans who came over. We're a little bit of everything, and I think sometimes we need to sit in that space because there's a lot of greatness and a lot of trauma associated with it when we think about what our shared experience is. I want to acknowledge many of the folks who were named, like Hilda. You're like all our grandma, and I love you to death. Thank you, Hilda. As well as Angel Rubio Navarrijo, who it took forever to get appointed to the Community Commission for Public Safety and Accountability, but he's there in the position. I want to shout out Christina Pasciós as Chief of Staff, who should be recognized for being the first in that position. Eric Martinez, who I'm sure day after day has to deal with us, want to give you your credit and flowers as well. And the person who I brought up and recommended was Johannes Favi, who is the deputy director of the Illinois Community for Displaced Immigrants. Johannes is an immigrant, yes, give it up. Now, Johannes is an immigrant from West Africa, but he is up there because he is family with us. When we went through the migrant mission, as we were going through, it was Johannes who came in and said, hey, I see how you all are doing it. I've got a multitude of suggestions of how the process can be better, how we can make sure we're centering with the experiences for people, how we can help with the legal process, how we make sure that people don't feel less or other. And so when you think about how we all are truly coalition, and we all are truly family, and we all are originated from the same people, I wanted to make sure that you had the space with us as well. Because we've had such a year and a half of just division and argument and really our own trauma coming into conflict with itself, that to have this opportunity to thank you for your work and to recognize you like everyone else as our family is something I'm immensely proud of. Thank you, brother, for your help. And thank you all for all the work that you do. We have much more to do. I ask that all of you push us to be better. And let's make this not just one day. Maybe someday we can fix it so that the month isn't just in between two months because that's a little awkward. We just have our own month that people could understand. Thank you for everything you are, what you've done for us, and what you continue to push us to do. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. If there, if there aren't any other hands, okay. The chair recognizes Alderman Raymond López. Did you, did you, were you raising your hand as well? I didn't see you. Okay. So then, how about we do this? Okay, of course. So let's start with then, because actually three more. But thank you, Alderman López. So then next, the chair recognizes Halo Gutierrez.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
As you all know, I'm the proud first Latina to represent the 14th Ward. And for me, even speaking with an accent fools me out of energy and joy to not represent this ward, that now it's 88% Latino. And I'm proud to be able to speak to them in Spanish, where they come and seek for help that they've been seeking for years, and showing and giving them a helping hand when they really did not find solutions or answers to their concerns. Thank you so much for having this space and bringing together all these great Latinos that have paved the way for us now to be here. We've worked so hard, Julieta, those COVID days with Ken Alvarado as well, New Life. Vilma, thank you for your work as a first woman in the city council. And all of you, great work that we've done, and all the contributions for this city and this country. As a proud Latina now of three girls, we need to continue to empower our community and to speak both languages and be proud of our roots, be proud of being Mexican or whatever we are from. We always need to stand proud because sometimes our kids don't want to speak the language because they're afraid of being bullied. So we need to continue to empower them and feel happy and continue to pave the way for more and more to come. As we said, they might be some of us now, as we have now the Women Caucus, right? And the Latino Caucus growing as well. I know we've been in spaces. We may be the first ones, but not the last ones. So let's continue to, I would just want to honor and recognize today someone that we invited from our community, Heidi Mendez Grimaldo. As we celebrate Latino Heritage Month, Heidi is not only a proud Latina leader from Guatemala, but also the founder of The Blessing Hand. Thank you. A vital organization dedicated to serving families across the southwest side of Chicago, including Gate Park and Chicago Lone. Through her tireless efforts, Heidi has cultivated safe spaces for our youth and has been at the forefront of providing monthly food distribution to our community. Heidi, along with her incredible team at The Blessing Hand, has become a pillar in the 14th Ward. Thank you for your dedication, passion, and for everything you do to uplift and empower our community. Your work is an inspiration, and we're grateful for all what you continue to do. Thank you, Heidi. And as you all know, real quick in Spanish. No serían mis remarks completos si no te hablo en español. Como dije, me enorgullece de ser la primera Latina en representar el distrito 14, que ahora es 88% Latino. Para mí es un orgullo y una bendición poder asistir a mis residentes y hablar con ellos en español y ayudarles después de que han buscado en diferentes puertas ayuda o solución a sus problemas. Gracias a todos los latinos y a todas las personas que han trabajado arduamente para que esta ciudad, nuestra bonita ciudad de Chicago, sea lo que actualmente es. El trabajo no termina y seguimos juntos luchando para crear un hogar seguro para nuestros hijos y poder seguir incrementando las oportunidades para todos los latinos en este país. Muchísimas gracias.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman López.
Thank you, Mr. President. And again, good afternoon, members of the city council. Good afternoon, members of our, to our, just think we're in this chamber today, and welcome back to our colleague. You know, it's crazy when I sit here that I get to say that I am the most senior Latino in this room. You'd never believe it with how youthful and young I look, but I am. And I think as we talk about the issues of Hispanic heritage, that we have to remember that in a city of millions, Latinos make up over 30% of the population, 30%. A great reflection here, but so many more throughout the city of Chicago. We are 46%, almost 47% of CPS students. Nearly half of our public education system serves Latino student population. Sadly though, Mr. President, though we are here at the end of Hispanic Heritage Month, what we see in terms of representation, what we see in terms of opportunity seems to have fallen flat, become stagnant. Even in this room, we have seen our participation as chairman stuck at 20%, barely 20% when we are nearly a third of this city. The Board of Education, with its recent reorganization, went from three members down to one. And as we celebrate the contributions of our Hispanic leaders, our Latino leaders, we are seeing a push now to get rid of the first Mexican-American head of CPS. We need to celebrate not just with paper, not just with resolutions, but with action. We need to ensure that when we say we are welcoming people, we are not putting them on toxic dump sites in neighborhoods that nobody expected to see them on. We need to make sure that if we are claiming to want people to bring in our Latino leaders that we're proud of, to Alderman Burnett's point, it's not an honor just for him to say that he has somebody in his ward. Because I got news for you. You've got somebody in every ward. Latinos are from one corner of this city to the next. All of us should have had 50 people here. Because I guarantee you, there are at minimum five great Latino leaders in every one of your wards. At minimum, I could probably close my eyes and throw a dart and hit someone. Or to be more culturally correct, I could throw a chonk at somebody, and I guarantee I'll catch one. Well, not at you, maybe me. But I know that we're everywhere. I know that our representation, our values, and our commitment to community is everywhere. So I challenge you, Mr. President, and indeed all my colleagues, that next year, when we come back and we talk come back and we talk about Hispanic heritage again, every single one of us should be able to look back and reflect, just as I think we should be able to do that for Black History Month and for every other heritage that we celebrate, because we are truly a city of immigrants, a city of, whose culture is so dynamic only because so many people have called, come here and called it home. We need to make sure today and recommit ourselves to ensuring that Latinos are in every level of government, are in every hall of power, in every room of decision being made, that our workforce is reflective of that, that we're recruiting to make sure that our police, our fire, our city workers, the park district, the school, everyone, that there's a place for Latinos there. One of my colleagues famously had a sign that said Latinos need not apply, and sadly, I don't think much has changed in that. We can do better, and as we round out this month of Hispanic heritage, it's incumbent upon all of us to make sure that we do not settle, that we do not go stagnant in making sure that this building and all it touches is home for us all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. For the final speaker, the Chair recognizes Alderman Byron Sixo Lopez.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, and I wanted to also raise in support of this resolution. And it is a real honor and pleasure to represent a community like the 25th Ward, a port of entry for many immigrants, especially in recent decades, the heart of the Mexican and Mexican-American community. So I'd be remiss if I don't recognize not only the great contributions of our community, but especially of the leaders that make our city, as the mayor says, the best freaking city in the country, and I will argue in the world. And despite the challenges, our communities continue to grow, or Latino, Latina, Hispanic communities continue to grow, and thanks to the leaders in the box, thanks to the many leaders in our community that continue to work day in and day out. Today, in the city of Chicago, we have 820,000 Chicagoans of Latino descent. We are the third of the population, and it's something to be proud of, it's something to celebrate, and of course, it's something that we continue to work on. It is important to recognize, of course, that progress has been made. I'd like to recognize former Alderwoman Cologne advocating for affordable housing. And now I have the honor to be the Chair of the Housing Committee, so that we continue to fight for affordable housing across the city, so that our community continues to thrive and we continue to support those people who are working so hard, the small businesses, street vendors in the former, or the formal economy, people who day in and day out make our city a vibrant and beautiful city for the world to watch. It is for me an immense honor to see now the first Latina, Puerto Rican, Chief of Staff to the city of Chicago, Christina Pasionzayas. That is something that we must be celebrated and recognize, and I thank Mayor Johnson also. And I want to correct my colleague, Alderman Lopez, there's another senior Alderperson, Alderman Carlos Ramirez Rosa, is also being in the council for just as long. And I tell you that it's very important in our community that we have a city that works with us, and us as elected officials should be the first ones by lead by example. Just yesterday, I was meeting with ASIA, or Latino contractors, Latina contractors. I had immense pleasure to represent a beautiful Mexican community, and I tell you that it's an immense pleasure for me to represent a ward where the majority of our businesses are Latina-owned. That is an immense pleasure for us. And it's also important that we recognize that it's a very difficult time for our communities, no doubt about it. Unfortunately, the powers that be that want to divide us, separate us, do not understand that it is in our diversity that we have our strength. We have leaders like Julieta Bolivar from Bolivian descent, an advocate for immigration, an advocate that works for SACAD. And I tell you, we have also leaders like, as Ellie said, Argules, a leader who is also a young person, the intergenerational struggle. I'm very proud to see you in the box today. Hilda Lafontaine. The different communities that make a beautiful community and a miracle city, a beautiful city is something to be celebrated, and of course, there's a lot of work to be done. So I will welcome my colleagues in the Latino Caucus to come. Yesterday, we committed with ASIA, with every Latino member in the caucus, to make sure that we support our Latino contractors, to improve procurement, to invest in small businesses, and to deliver results. We should be the first ones to take action to ensure that that happens. And it's an immense pleasure to have communities like Little Village. My colleague Alderman Rodriguez mentioned oftentimes, we are the magnificent two miles. And it's a great pleasure for me to represent a vibrant community that despite all the odds, when yesterday we were essential workers, today we try, we are become the criminals. We get criminalized. But it is in our diversity and the strength of the people in the box and the people in this council, and I'm glad to see many colleagues that celebrate with us the invaluable contributions of our Latina-Latino community. It was in our ward, and that's what I rise in support of this resolution, that our community understood that it is a strength in our work together, celebrating our diversity, our diasporas. We have Afro-Latinos as well, and we're proud of it. And also here in our city, proud to say that in our community, it was Rudy Lozano, our leader, who elected and helped elect the first black mayor in the city of Chicago, Mayor Washington. And I'm proud to say that that is the same coalition and the same efforts that we got to continue to do to protect our communities, to build coalitions, and to deliver on a city that is built with sweat, tears, and blood of so many before us. I celebrate all of you who were, who paved the way for many of us to be here with us in this council. We got to continue to work, because it's so much to be celebrated and honor. The wonderful Latino-Latina community that works so hard every day deserves our support, our investment, and our praise. So today, again, I rise in support of my commitment to work with Mayor Johnson, to continue to make our beautiful city the best freaking city in the country because of the beautiful contributions of Latino-Latina community, because as we said, si se puede. Thank you so much.
Thank you. You all did a wonderful job keeping your comments contained. Time has moved relatively quickly, but it's important, important comments for very important resolutions. Thank you to all that are in the box. Honorable Cologne, it's good to see you again. Thank you for your trailblazing leadership. You know, the diversity of our city is really our strength, you all, and what the Latinx community brings to, to the city of Chicago through its traditions, it's what makes our neighborhood so vibrant. But you know, the contribution of the Latinx community to, in every aspect of our existence is, you know, quite profound, and it is, it is felt across disciplines, whether it's education, whether it's business, art and culture, healthcare. You know, we're very blessed to have dynamic communities like Pilsen and Little Village and Hummer Park, which I'm always going to shout out 1455 North Washington, when I had a chance to vote for another Alder at that time, when my wife and I lived in Hummer Park. But, but it's also, it's not just the neighborhoods, it's the countries that are reflected and represented, whether it's Mako, Haiti, Colombia, Cuba, Colombia, Venezuela now, right? It's the beauty of our city, it's the soul of who we are. So I'm not, I'm not just happy and proud to celebrate Latin, Latinx Heritage Month. I'm very proud that not only do we have the first Latinx Chief of Staff in the history of Chicago, there are more Latinx people working in my administration in the history of Chicago. Now, as Alderman Sixo Lopez has articulated, he has of course a lot more work to do, but very proud that we're almost at 30%. Very proud of that. More Latinx chairs in the history of Chicago. More work to be done, but I'm proud of that. And I'm looking to continue to work with people, because as we see the displacement of Latinx folks in communities that they have been indigenous to, that displacement has created some tension. And I'm grateful that we have so many people who are carefully positioned to help bring about the type of transformation that our city deserves. So again, whether it's fighting for a livable wage, eliminating the subminimum wage, which has its vestiges in slavery, where we know most of the tip workers were brown and black women overwhelmingly, brown women who've been exploited and, and with paid time off, where brown workers have been exploited, taken advantage of, it was this body in this particular season that recognized that we got to change that. So I'm grateful for all the hard work. Now, I don't want to get myself in trouble, because if I say vive one country, I'm about to say all of them. Viva, all right. Viva all of our Latinx countries. All right. Congratulations, y'all. So with that, Alderman Mitchell, on a motion for the passage of this resolution.
Mr. President, I move passes in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Alderman Mitchell.
I now move that we return to the regular order of business.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Madam Clerk, Communications.
Counsel, City of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner of Housing, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the issuance of tax-exempt housing revenue bonds for the benefit of Lathrop Preservation Faith IC Project. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. After two committees, two, I know, after two committees being called, this will go to rules. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Board of Education to provide TIF funds for improvements at Chicago Vocational Career Academy High School. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. After two committees have been called, that will go to rules. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement with Revolution Workshop, a non-for-profit entity to provide TIF funds for space improvements. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. After two committees have been called, that will go to rules. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Housing, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the issuance of TIF funds for the heart of Uptown Apartments' Rehabilitation Project. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. After two committees called, that will go to rules. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Superintendent, the Chicago Board of Education, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the provision of permit fee waivers for the Chicago Board of Education. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. After rules, after two committees have been called, that will go to rules. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner of Housing, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the issuance of financial assistance for Thrive Exchange South Project. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the quest, public safety. After two committees have been called, that'll go to rules. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of redevelopment agreement with Out West Gallery and Cafe, a non-for-profit entity to provide NOF funds for property improvements. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Zoning. After two rule, after two committees have been called, that will go to rules. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit, transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the designation of specified area within the city for a Class 8 micro-property tax incentive. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. After two committees have been called, that will go to rules. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with ordinances approving the budget and authorizing the execution of service agreements for specified special service areas. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee. After two committees have been called, that will go to rules. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner of Fleet and Facility Management, I transmit here with an ordinance amending the municipal code regarding economic disclosure statements requirement for temporary occupancy agreements. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. After two committees have called, that will go to rules. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner of Fleet and Facility Management, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of an amended right-of-entry agreement with Columbia Yacht Club. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. After two committees have been called, that will go to rules. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Fleet and Facility Management, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of an amended right-of-entry agreement with Lincoln Park Zoo's Urban Wildlife Institute. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. After two committees have been called, that will go to rules. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Fleet and Facility Management, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of a lease agreement with Cook County. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. After two committees have been called, that will go to rules. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with ordinances authorizing the sale of city-owned properties. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. After two committees have been called, that will go to rules. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the expenditure of open space impact fees for developing a turf field at Goat Elementary School. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation. After two committees being called, that will go to rules. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the expenditure of open space impact fee funds for open space creation at 947 West Coleridge Street. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation. After two committees have been called, that will go to rules. At the request of, ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Transportation, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing right-of-way acquisitions for Inglewood Nature Trail Project. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. After two committees called, that will go to rules. Ladies and gentlemen, I have appointed LaShawn Cobb as Commissioner of the Chicago Housing Authority for a term effective immediately and expiring July 7, 2029, to succeed Christina Matos, who has resigned. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. After two committees have been called, that will go to rules. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to Section 2-80-070C of the Municipal Code of Chicago, I have appointed Ciara Whitaker as a member of District Council 006 to succeed Eric Russell, who has resigned. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Police and Fire. After two committees have been called, that will go to rules. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to various special service areas. Your favorable consideration of the appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. After two committees have been called, that will go to rules. I City Clerk Anna Valencia hereby inform the City Council that the following documents were filed in my office relating to the respective subjects designated as follows: Determination Certificate, Certificate of Chief Financial Officer Concerning Second-Lien Water Revenue Bonds, Refunding Series 2024A, City's Funding Requirement for Chicago's Police Annuity and Benefit Fund for 20, for year 2025, and Report of Fireman's Annuity and Benefit Fund for Chicago for years 2022 and 2023. for Years 2022 and 2023. I City Clerk Valencia also inform the City Council that all those matters which were considered by the City Council at the regular meeting held on September 18, 2024, which were required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form, or in one or more newspapers were published in pamphlet form on October 9, 2024, by being printed in full text, printed pamphlet copies of the Journal Proceedings of the City Council, City of Chicago. I City Clerk Valencia also transmit here with the following miscellaneous communications reports reporting requiring City Council action: zoning reclassifications of particular areas which refer to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, and claims against the City of Chicago which refer to Committee on Finance. Your Honor, that concludes the reports and communications from the mayor and other city officials.
Thank you very much. For committee reports, we will start with the Finance Committee. Thank you. Chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the City Council. Reporting for the City Council's Committee on Finance, we celled a committee meeting on October 2, 2024. The following items received a due-pass recommendation from the committee. Item number one is an ordinance concerning the execution of a redevelopment agreement with Bandwidth Music LTD as a Chicago Recovery Plan Community Development grantee for a capital project at 134 South California Avenue in the 27th Ward in an amount not to exceed $5 million. Mr. President, unless someone wishes to speak on this item, I move passage of this item by a roll call vote.
Seeing no hands. Madam Clerk. So please use your e-vote application to record your vote once it is open.
The voting is now open. The voting is now open. Please use your e-device. Raise your hand if you need support. The voting is now open. I will now call for a voice vote for those who have not used the e-device. Alder Person Yancy. Alder Person Yancy is a yes. Alder Person Ramirez is a yes. Alder Person Curtis.
Yes.
Alder Person Curtis is a yes. Alder Person Mo... Oh, God, mostly, okay. Alder Person Rodriguez. Alder Person Rodriguez is a yes. Alder Person Scott. Alder Person Scott is a yes. Alder Person Fuentes. Alder Person Wagispack.
Yes.
Alder Person Wagispack is a yes. Alder Person Rodriguez Sanchez.
Aye.
Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. Alder Person Ramirez Rosa. Ramirez Rosa? Okay. Anyone I missed? All right, the voting is now closed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have 47 ayes, zero nays. This matter is passed. Alderman Mitchell on the motion to reconsider.
Mr. President, motion to reconsider the vote?
All those in favor, the reconsideration of this vote, signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. This motion fails. Chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number two is an ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute a replacement redevelopment agreement and issuance of TIP funds to German-American National Congress Chapter Chicago North and Dank House, doing business as Dank House German-American Culture Center for the redevelopment project at 4740 Northwestern Avenue in the 40th Ward in an amount not to exceed $1,562,786. I move passage of this item by the most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number three is an ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute a redevelopment agreement and issuance of tax increment financing funds to Timeline Theater Company for the redevelopment of existing warehouse and construction of a new theater auditorium at 5033 through 35 North Broadway in the 48th Ward in an amount not to exceed $14 million. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number four is an ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute a redevelopment agreement and issuance of tax increment financing funds to Double Down Development LLC and Double Door Liquors 2.5 LLC for the redevelopment into commercial space, including a live music venue and space for tuition-free after-school programs at 1050 through 1052 West Wilson Avenue in the 46th Ward in an amount not to exceed $5 million. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number five is a substitute ordinance concerning the Second Amendment to the redevelopment agreement and authorizing ordinance with Our Revival Chicago LLC, Our Revival Chicago Operating Company LLC, and Southside Revival Not-for-Profit for restoration of the Romova Theater at 3518 South Halsted in the 11th Ward in an amount not to exceed $15,596,000. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number six is an ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Board of Education for the provision of TIP funds for the improvements at James Weldon Johnson STEM Elementary School at 1420 South Albany Avenue in the 24th Ward in an amount not to exceed $3.75 million. I move passage of this item by the same motion, with the exception of Alderman Lopez, who wishes to be recorded as voting no on this item.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number seven...
This order passes.
Sorry, Mr. President. Item number seven is an ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Board of Education for the provision of TIP funds for improvements at Collins Academy Steam High School at 1313 South Sacramento Avenue in the 24th Ward in an amount not to exceed $2.5 million. I move passage of this item by the same motion, with the exception of Alderman Lopez, who wishes to be recorded as voting no on this item.
Hearing no other objections, so ordered.
Item number eight is an ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Board of Education for provision of tax increment financing funds for improvements at Thomas Chalmers Steam Elementary School at 2745 West Roosevelt Road in the 28th Ward in an amount not to exceed $3.75 million. I move passage of this item by the same motion, with the exception of Alderman Lopez, who wishes to be recorded as voting no.
Hearing no other objections, so ordered.
Item number nine is a substitute ordinance concerning the execution of a redevelopment agreement and issuance of multifamily housing revenue bonds and other financial assistance with the Avenue Southwest LLC for the acquisition, construction, and equipping of a four-story building at 3601 through 3625 West Chicago Avenue in the 27th Ward in an amount not to exceed $20,015,000. I move passage of this item by the first and most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number 10 is a substitute ordinance concerning the execution of a redevelopment agreement and the issuance of multifamily bonds and other financial assistance with Sacred Apartments Owner LLC for the acquisition, construction, and equipping of a low-income residential facility at 9212 South Burley Avenue in the 10th Ward in an amount not to exceed $5 million in TIP, $23.5 million in tax-exent bonds, and $8,476,758 in multifamily program funds. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number 11 is a substitute ordinance concerning the issuance of financial assistance and execution of a TIP redevelopment agreement to Brown Derby LLC and R2 Development LLC for the redevelopment of the building at 79 West Monroe Street in the 34th Ward in an amount not to exceed $28 million in TIP. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number 12a is an order authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Bass versus DeCurus et al. in the amount of $332,500. I move passage of this item by the same motion, with the exception of Alderman Spazato, who wishes to be recorded as voting no on this item.
Hearing no other objections, so ordered.
Item number 12b is an order authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Thalela Wade individually and as mother and next friend of Jada Dior Hamilton, a minor, versus Charles Doughty and the City of Chicago in the amount of $445,000. I move passage of this item by the first and most favorable roll call vote of the Finance report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number 12c is an order authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Eddie Banks versus City of Chicago versus John Tinker in the amount of $1.75 million. I move passage of this item by the same motion, with the exception of Alderman Lopez, who wishes to be recorded as voting no on this item.
Hearing no other objections, so ordered.
Item number 13 is a substitute ordinance concerning an amendment of Municipal Code Chapter 2-44 by adding new section 2-44-150, authorizing the seating of tax-exempt private activity volume cap to the Illinois Housing Development Authority and the Chicago Housing Authority. I move passage of this item by the first and most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number 14 is an ordinance concerning the issuance of City's Second Lean Wastewater Transmission Revenue Bonds Project and Refunding Series 2024B. I move passage of this item by the same motion, with the exception of Alderman Lopez, Alderman Wagispack, Alderman Cardona, and Alderman Beal, who all wish to be recorded as voting no on this item.
Hearing no other objections, so ordered.
Item number 15 is a substitute ordinance concerning the refunding of the General Obligations Sales Tax Securitization Corporation Bond Series 2024. I move passage of this item by the same motion, with the exception of Alderman Lopez, Alderman Wagispack, Alderman Cardona, who all wish to be recorded as voting no on this item.
Is that what you needed, Alderman?
I would like to speak to the item, please.
Okay. Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Wagispack.
Thank you, Mr. President. I felt it was important to just speak a little bit about why I'm voting no on this item. Just a few short weeks ago, in your budget forecast meeting, your finance team said there was no reason to refinance debt, claiming we didn't have enough to refi and it would have little impact. That was August 29, with your team saying it didn't make sense to go to that refi. Then a couple of weeks ago, we suddenly saw the $1.5 billion refi launched with little to no information necessary to make good judgments for the financial future of the city. I will say, though, that when asked to remove the phrase regarding operating expenses, that was done, and I do appreciate that, along with my colleagues. However, what we see in this deal with the latest setting the ground for the funds to be used for the budget, aka working capital, I have to disagree. Just a few weeks ago, the CFO also stated that in prior years, the city had taken on the practice of refunding and pushing out debt to further years, or committing to the damaging scoop-and-toss strategy. This deal today is akin to restarting that practice, and it is not good for us. So this week, we saw a rebuke of that deal from the municipal market analytics. The refinancing rebuke stated, "Highlights the city's diminished financial flexibility. This sale could be another signal to the city's decade-long uptrend in credit quality has come to an end." The bottom line for me is that this kicks the can down the road at this point, and we get a downgrade further damaging our ability to borrow when needed. And the savings from the first day this was launched are no longer there. The damaging comments from leadership in the CPS debacle also cost us. The lack of transparency and timing on this deal, coupled with the state of the budget, cost us. We need discipline and strong fiscal management to keep our ratings as they are and prevent them from being dinged. Overall, I don't believe this particular deal is being done at a good time for our city. And unless things change, unless we find new revenue, not based on fantasy, and unless there is true openness and transparency on deals, we have lost the 10 years of increasing ratings that until this point put us on a sound fiscal footing. And fiscal accountability actually saves money. Fiscal responsibility requires... It creates stability for the rating agencies that determine our costs, and fiscal responsibility creates predictability for our residents and businesses who rely on good judgment and city government. We need a strong governance framework. The rating agencies expect the city to have a strong budget and fiscal management practices, notwithstanding those of what we've seen in recent days. All in all, this is going to be a more costly, more damaging deal that equals higher property taxes and higher rents, even higher than the additional property tax hike that may cost us all. As one of my constituents put it, kicking the can down the road like this takes us further down the road of arithmic oblivion. I therefore vote no.
Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. And before I begin, I do want to also join my colleague in thanking Chairman Dow in addressing one of the issues that we mentioned, which was the elimination of the operating expense language. However, there's one more item that needs to be addressed, and that is the fact, as it was noted by some of our colleagues here, by the comptroller of the state of Illinois, by a number of independent news organizations and individuals looking at this, is that the City of Chicago pays nearly double the fees when it comes to municipal bonds than other cities similar to our size. That is a savings that we must activate now in order to get the best deal for taxpayers and not get continuously hosed by those who are borrowing us money in our time of need. To that end, Mr. President, I move to amend this ordinance on its face, page 19, section 2.18, bond sales, section D, striking the number 90... Striking the number 85 and replacing it with 90, so that the sentence reads, "Bonds sold pursuant to a contract of purchase shall be sold at a price of not less than, now as amended, 90% of the principal amount of the bonds being sold."
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that we lay that motion on the table.
Very well. Okay, just hold on, okay? Just... The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, sir. I would move for a roll call... I would ask for a roll call vote on the chairman's motion.
Thank you. So there was a motion on the floor to amend this particular ordinance and measure on its face on the floor. There was a motion to lay that motion on the table, which means if you vote in favor of laying this motion on the table, you wish to proceed towards our regular order of business, moving for the passage of this item. If you vote no, you wish to take up the motion to consider an amendment on the face on the current ordinance. Chair recognizes Alder Fuentes.
Before we move to that vote, I'd like to be recorded as a yes as the first item of Committee on Finance.
Madam Clerk, please add Alder Fuentes. Uh, Madam Clerk, please add Alder Fuentes to the most favorable roll call vote of the first item in this committee, as well as the subsequent unsuccessful motion to reconsider. And then there was a roll call for the, um, laying it on the table motion. Madam Clerk, please use your e-vote devices to record your vote at this time.
The voting is now open. The voting is now open. Please use your e-devices. Raise your hand if you need support. The voting is now open. Alderman Curtis.
No.
Alderman Curtis is a no. Alder woman, or Alder person Rodriguez Sanchez.
Aye.
Alder person Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes, and Alder person Ramirez Rosa. All right. Anyone not vote that has voted? All right, the voting is now closed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There are twenty-eight yays, twenty nays. The motion to lay, the initial motion to create a substitute on the face on the floor fails. The motion succeeds, all right, to lay it on the table, passes. Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Alderman Silvana Tabarson, I move to defer and publish this item.
The chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Moving on to items number sixteen and seventeen, which consist of orders of authorization for the payment of various small claims against the City of Chicago and the denial of payment of various small claims against the City of Chicago. If there are no objections, I move that these items be placed for passage in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number eighteen is a proposed order authorizing charitable solicitation on the public way Tag Day permits for the Nature Conservancy, citywide, January one, twenty twenty-five through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. These will be placed on file with the clerk. Mr. President, this concludes my report from the Committee on Finance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next committee is Committee on Budget and Government Operations. The chair recognizes Chair Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, before, uh, going to, uh, to my report, uh, wish to, uh, make a motion to suspend the rules in relation to committee referrals.
There's a motion on the floor to suspend the rules in relation to...
Committee referrals.
Committee requests, committee reports. All those in favor? There's a roll call vote to suspend the rules to take up consideration on further committee reports. There's a roll call vote that's being requested. Do you wish to be recognized? The chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
I would like to know what that means.
Would you like to know what that, he, Alderman Beal wants to know what it means to call for the suspension of the rules to take up further considerations, uh, committee reports? Give me a second. I'll offer up that explanation of what it means to suspend the rules to take up considerations of committee reports. So the, the motion is to suspend the rules for consideration of committee referrals. So there's a motion on the floor to suspend the rules for consideration of committee referrals. Hold on a second. The chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, seeing that that is an unprecedented motion, move, tactic, or whatever you want to call it, uh, we have never, well, I'm not going to say never because the past administration did it, but it was done illegally to try to suspend the rules to talk about suspension of committee reports.
Uh, hold, hold on, you're, he's, you're directing towards me. We're, we're good. Yep.
If the attempt is to try to re-refer or to try to manipulate the rules in order to circumvent all the ordinances that just went to the Rules Committee, that is totally out of order.
Okay, thank you for...
And I don't have a lawyer whispering in my ear, which I wish we did, to tell us what the rules are.
Well, we have a rulebook, and the suspension of the rules for consideration of committee referrals is not out of order. That is within the order of business, and there's been a motion for a roll call. Madam Clerk, could you please op- oh, just a sec, ho- ho- hold on a second, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Beal. Please, sir.
Motion to appeal the ruling of the chair.
Okay, there's a motion to appeal the ruling of the chair. The, uh, the, uh, the, um, motion to appeal the ruling on whether or not the rules allow for the suspension of the rules to consider committee referrals, I don't believe that this can be, um, challenged. However, in my attempt for the last seventeen months to display a collaborative operation that allows for disagreement to be aired in the public, I will allow the motion to move forward on whether or not the motion on the floor, which has clearly stated in the rules that allow for the suspension of the rules to consider committee referrals, for that ruling to be overruled. All right, so shall the ruling of the chair that allows for the re- the motion to consider to suspend the rules, to consider the referral of committees, of the committee referrals, should the ruling of the chair be sustained? All those in favor that the ruling of the chair should be sustained to allow for the suspension of the rules for referrals of committees to be discussed? If you, if you agree that my ruling should be sustained, signify by saying aye. Okay, there's been a roll call vote on whether or not... Okay, so the, so the sus- so the ruling for the suspension of the rules be sustained? Say yes or no? Madam Clerk, so, members of the city council, use your e-vote application to record your vote.
The voting is now open. The voting's now open. Please raise your hand if you need support. The voting is now open. All right, we'll now take a voice vote for anyone who has not voted yet. Alder person Hall.
Aye.
Alder person Hall is a yes. Alder person Coleman.
Aye.
Yes, Alder person Coleman is a yes. Alder person Curtis.
Aye.
Alder person Curtis is a no. Alder person...
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, you're a yes?
Yes.
Okay, Curtis is a yes. Alder person Rodriguez Sanchez.
Aye.
Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. Alder person Ramirez Rosa. Ramirez Rosa, not there? Okay, Alder person Nugent. On Chambers, okay. All those who voted who wished, voting is now closed.
So there are thirty-three yays, there are fourteen nays. Alderman Irvin, you now have the room by the vote of this body to make your mo- motion again if you wish to suspend the rules for the consider... Alderman Irvin, you may now make your motion.
Thank you, Mr. President.
We can have, if you wish, we can have Alderman Laspada make the official motion.
Doesn't bother me.
It doesn't matter?
No, doesn't bother me.
All right, the motion to refer those items. Uh, Alderman, Chairman Irvin, you can make that motion.
No, I move that we refer the items, uh, previously introduced that were referred to Committee on, Committees and Rules back to their respective committees as they were designated in the original motion.
Very well, thank you for the motion. The chair recognizes Chairman, I'm sorry, the chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. No, I'm not chairman, but I do make a motion to lay Alderman, Chairman Irvin's motion on the table, please.
Okay, there's a motion to lay Alderman Irvin's motion to refer all of the items back to the original committees in which they were designed, or at least designated. That motion has been offered. Alderman Lopez has made a motion to lay that motion on the table. There is a roll call vote that's being requested here. So a yes vote means you wish for those items to remain in rules. A no vote means you wish for those items to be referred to the designated committees in which they were originally purposed. And just please bear with our clerk as, um, she prepares for the roll call e-vote. Please use your e-vote application devices to record your vote. The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
I'm, I'm sorry, forgive me, Mr. President. As a point of order, we never actually took a vote on suspending the rules, only the, the motion to table it, so we would need to suspend the rules before we can get to Chairman Irvin's.
That was, that was just the last vote that we took. That was the...
No, it wasn't. That was not the last vote. It was, it was the, the last vote, Mr. President, was the appeal of the decision of the chair. There was no actual vote. I don't, I just want to do it nice and proper. It's still going to be the same result.
What did, what did you write on?
Thank you very much. So the, so the, we'll return back to the initial request from Chairman Irvin to suspend the rules in order to take up a matter regarding committee referrals. There's a request for a roll call. So a yes vote means you wish to suspend the rules so that, uh, the, the chair is requesting So you, your decision is whether or not you wish to suspend the rules to take up the matter of committee referrals. The chair recognizes Chairman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just to be clear on what it is that we are, um, what we're voting on, uh, it is for us, for those items that were introduced, to go to their respective committees. Uh, these include routine appointments for our SSAs, they include TIF assistance for various wards and, and communities. Again, uh, while I don't understand why we would want to hold up viable projects for communities, um, that that's the pleasure of the body, uh, you will not vote to suspend the rules, but if you do want business to occur in our communities, if you want things to move forward in the community, uh, I think that, uh, you, you would vote for us to suspend so we can do the business that the people who sent us here to do. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chair. So again, this is a motion to suspend the rules in order to discuss or take up items referred to committees. Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President, and to be clear, as a point of order, this motion is simply to suspend the rules because there will be a follow-up motion presumably to do exactly what the Chairman of Budget...
That is correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
The chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Mr. President, um, our rules, rule number forty-two, states when two or more committees are called, the subject matter shall be referred without debate, without debate, to the Committee on Committee on Rules and shall be, in which that time the council should meet at the next city council meeting. It doesn't say you can re-refer. This is debate. It says it is being referred without debate. So now we're debating it. So if you can correct me on rule forty-two, which states that it's non-debatable, why are we debating it?
Thank you. So we're not debating the items?
Yes, we are.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Alderman. Thank you. So this is a motion to refer items. I'm sorry, this is a motion to suspend the rules, uh, for consideration of committee referrals. This is not a debate. It's a motion to suspend the rules for, um, consideration of committee referrals. The chair recognizes Chairman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I, I actually agree with the gentleman from the Ninth Ward. Thank you, Mr. President. I, I actually agree with the gentleman from the Ninth Ward. When those referrals were made and they were objected to by passing on to a second committee, there was no debate. They were, in fact, given over to the Committee on Committees and Rules. We are at a different juncture where we are working to suspend the rules so that they can be referred. So what you stated was actually correct, but we're at a different juncture now, at a different point in the, in the meeting and in the conversation. So I agree with you. Write that down. I agree with you. That, that we are, we're in sync on that one issue. We are in sync. However, we're at a different juncture right now, and the, and the suspension of the rules is always something that can be done by the will of the body. Now again.
Hold on, hold on, I got you. Hold on, Alderman, Alderman.
Again.
Alderman Bill, I promise you, I will recognize you. We'll do it with some decorum and order. We're good at that.
That's all, so that's all, that's all I wanted to say. So we're out of that particular point. We're at a different juncture in this conversation whereby, again, if it's the will of the body to send those items to their respective committees to do the business of the people, then that's a decision of the body. If we don't want to do that and they want to stand rules, then so be it. But I do believe that we would want to do the business of the people by putting the items that have been designated to go to their respective committees where they need to go.
Very well. Alderman Bill, do you wish to be recognized? The Chair recognizes Alderman Bill.
Mr. President, we are setting a dangerous precedent on manipulating our rules. We are manipulating our rules to benefit our own narrative. Now, we have all been down this road before, and we know how it ended. Our rules state that those items are referred to the Rules Committee, and we are circumventing our same rules to fit our own narrative. Now, if that's what you all want to do, so be it. Okay? But let me just say this. We don't even need this. You might as well throw this on out the, out the window. You don't need the rules. We don't need the rules, and matter of fact, we don't even need fifty Aldermen. Because if we can't question, if we can't look at different things and bring rules to follow, what are we doing here? You may not like it. You think I like deferring the stuff, but you know what? I don't like canceling shotspodding when people are dying on the damn street. Now y'all do what you want to do.
All right, very well. Thank you, thank you, Alderman, very much. And so again, the rules make it very clear that this body can suspend or call for a motion to suspend the rules. That is within the rules and the stipulations of our guidelines. I can tell you one thing for sure. We're going to hold to the rules. I do believe we need fifty Aldermen, by the way. I do. So there's a motion on the floor to suspend the rules for the consideration of committee referrals. There's been a roll call request for that. Madam Clerk? All fifty Alders, I strongly encourage you all to use your e-vote devices to cast your vote at this time.
The voting is now open, the voting is now open. Please use your e-device. The voting is now open. I will now call any of those who have not voted by a voice vote. Alder Person Curtis.
No, but we definitely need fifty Aldermen.
Alder Person Curtis is a no. Alder Person Rodriguez Sanchez.
Aye.
Rodriguez Sanchez is an aye, a yes. Alder Person Ramirez Rosa.
Yes.
Ramirez Rosa is a yes. Alder Person Nugent. All right, the voting is now closed.
There are thirty-one yeas, seventeen nays. The motion to suspend the rules has failed. The Chair recognizes Chairman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the City Council, reporting for the Committee on Budget and Government Operations, which held a meeting on October seventh. The Committee has a series of items to report and recommend the passage of the following items. Item number one is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning an annual appropriation ordinance year 2024 amendment within Fund Nine Two Five. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number two is a transfer within the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety for year 2024. If there is no objection, I make the same motion.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Item number three is a transfer of funds within the Twenty-first Ward Wage Automatic Allowance and Expense Account for year 2024. If there is no objection, I make the same motion.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Item number four is a transfer of funds within the Twenty-sixth Ward Wage Allowance and Automatic Expense Account for year 2024. If there is no objection, I make the same motion.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Item number five is a transfer of funds within the Thirty-first Ward Wage Allowance and Automatic Expense Account for year 2024. There is no objection, I make the same motion.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Item number six is a transfer of funds within the Forty-seventh Ward Wage Allowance and Automatic Expense Account for year 2024. If there is no objection, I make the same motion.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Item number seven is a transfer of funds within the Committee on Ethics and Government Oversight for year 2024. I make the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Item number eight is a transfer of funds within the Forty-eighth Ward Wage Automatic Allowance and Expense Account for year 2024. I make the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Item number nine is an amendment of a transfer of funds within the Forty-ninth and Fifteenth Wards Wage Allowance and Automatic Expense Account for year 2024. I make the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, we've also passed out the listing of dates for our hearings for the upcoming 2025 budget. All of this is pending. A executive introduction that's currently scheduled for October thirtieth. As you'll note, that we have two Saturday dates, as well as a noon start on the first day. I do want to thank Alderman Silverstein and for her allowance for us to work on those Saturdays, and we worked through that with her to get to where we need to be, as the desire for us to not have to have hearings or anything during the week of Thanksgiving. So please judge yourselves accordingly, and as they say, happy budgeting. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. The Chair recognizes Chair Villegas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the City Council, reporting for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development, which met on Monday, October seventh. The Committee held a meeting and recommended passage of the following items. Items one through twenty-four on the report are a series of appointments, reappointments, and a substitute reappointment to various special service areas. Item one, an appointment, reappointment to SSA number one dash twenty fifteen. Item number two is a reappointment to SSA number seventeen. Number three is a reappointment to SSA number nineteen. Items four through six are reappointments and appointment to SSA number twenty-four. Item seven is a reappointment to SSA number twenty-six. Item eight through twelve are reappointments and an appointment to Special Service Area Twenty-nine dash twenty fourteen. Items thirteen through seventeen are reappointments and appointment to SSA number thirty-four. Item eighteen is a substitute reappointment to SSA number forty-three. Item nineteen is a reappointment to Special Service Area number fifty-four. Item twenty is a reappointment to Special Service Area Fifty-nine dash twenty twenty-two. Item twenty-one is an appointment to Special Service Area number seventy-six. Item twenty through, twenty-two through twenty-four are reappointments and an appointment to Special Service Area number seventy-nine. I move for pass of these appointments, reappointments, and substitute reappointment by the first favorable, first favorable roll call, the vote on Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Well, thank you very much. Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Items twenty-five through thirty-four on the report are a series of ordinances regarding the scope of services, budget, tax levy, and service provider agreement for various special service areas. These areas include SSA number forty-four, SSA number one dash twenty fifteen, SSA number nineteen, SSA number twenty, SSA twenty-one dash twenty sixteen, SSA number twenty-four, SSA number twenty-five, SSA forty-three, SSA fifty-four, SSA seventy-five. I move for pass of these items by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Items thirty-five through forty on the agenda are ordinance authorizing public hearings for various special service areas. Public hearing for SSA number eight, public hearing to establish new SSA thirty-two dash twenty twenty-four. Item thirty-seven, public hearing regarding SSA number forty-two. Item thirty-eight, public hearing establishing SSA seventy-six. Item thirty-nine, public hearing on establishment of SSA eighty-one. Item forty, public hearing on establishment of SSA number eighty-two. I move for pass of these items by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Items forty-one and forty-two on the agenda are ordinances dealing with two Class Six B tax incentives. Item forty-one on the report is an ordinance to approve the issuance of a Class Six B tax incentive for a property at twenty-five fifteen through twenty-five sixty-one West Taylor Street in the Twenty-eighth Ward. Item forty-two on the report is an ordinance to approve the issuance of a Class Six B tax incentive for a property at forty-two oh four, forty-two oh eight, forty-two ten, and forty-two eighteen through forty-two thirty-two West Lake Street in the Twenty-eighth Ward. I move for pass of these items by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Committee on Housing and Real Estate, Chair recognizes Chair Seixto Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of City Council, reporting for your Committee on Housing and Real Estate, which held an in-person meeting on Tuesday, October first, 2024. The Committee has a series of reports recommending passage of fifteen ordinances, including restructuring agreements, automatic introductions, a code amendment, and various lease agreements and land sales. The first item is for, from the Department of Housing, item number one, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero zero twelve five four seven, restructuring of home loan agreement with Renaissance San Luke SLF LP for property at fifteen oh one West Melrose Street in the Thirty-second Ward. I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The next item is also from the Department of Housing, item number two, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero zero twelve five five zero, sale, transfer, and assumption of city debt from Elise Neighborhood Development Corporation to Ventus Karibuni LLC, a permanent supportive living facility at eighty, eighty-two hundred South Elise Avenue in the Eighth Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The next two items are automatic introductions. Item number three is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero zero eleven four hundred, designation of fifteen sixty-five North Clyburn Avenue as low affordability community in the Second Ward. And item four, pass as a substitute, substitute ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero zero twelve two one four, designation of thirty-nine fifty-five North Kilpatrick Avenue and thirty-oh sixty-five North Milwaukee Avenue as low affordability community in the Forty-fifth Ward. I move passage of these two items by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number five is a cut, the Cut the Tape Initiative, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero zero twelve four two five, amendment of the Municipal Code, Chapter two dash one two four, ending the process of submitting acquisitions, dispositions, and change in use of city-owned land to the Chicago Planning Commission and Community Development Commission. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The next three items are grouped together from the Department of Planning and Development. There are three lease agreements for use of city-owned property as public outdoor plazas in the Third, Sixteenth, and Twenty-fourth Wards. The ordinance numbers are ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero zero twelve five four four, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero zero twelve five four five, and ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero zero one two five seven one. I move passage of these items by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The next DPD item is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero zero twelve five thirty-eight, sale of city-owned property at various locations to multiple individuals under Chai Block Builder Platform, open space land sale in the Sixteenth and the Twentieth Wards. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The next two items from the Department of Planning are from the Adjacent Neighbors Land Acquisition Program, ANLAP, for sale of city-owned properties in the Third and Twenty-Ninth Wards. These are ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero zero one two five three nine and ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero zero one two five four one. I move passage of these items by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Items twelve through fifteen are for the sale of city-owned vacant properties in the Sixth, Twentieth, Twenty-first, and Twenty-second Wards under Chai Block Builder Platform. The ordinance numbers are ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero zero one two five three five, dash zero zero one two five five seven, dash zero zero one two five six one, and dash zero zero one two five three seven. I move passage of these items by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Finally, item sixteen, on our summary, was held in committee. Mr. President, this concludes my, my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Committee on License and Consumer Protection, Chair recognizes Chair Silverstein.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the City Council. I am reporting for the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. We held a meeting on October seventh, 2024, to consider four ordinances regarding liquor moratoriums in the Tenth, Sixteenth, Thirty-ninth, and Forty-second Wards. The Committee has recommended passage of each of these items, O two zero two four dash zero zero one one two zero zero, and others ending in one two two one two, one two four one nine, and one two four two four. Mr. President, I move that the City Council concur on the recommendations of the License Committee by the same roll call as item number one of the Committee on Finance report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
O two zero two four dash zero zero one one two zero three, an ordinance to amend Section Nine of the Municipal Code of Chicago regarding restrictions on operation of pedicabs. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
O two zero two four dash zero zero one one two seven four, a substitute ordinance regarding restricted residential zone shared housing and vacation rentals in a precinct of the Twenty-third Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
O two zero two four dash zero zero one two one three three and zero zero one one two seven five, two substitute ordinances designating precincts of the Twenty-third Ward as restricted cannabis zones. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
O two zero two four dash zero zero one two three eight four, an ordinance to amend Section Four dash one six zero, dash one zero zero of the Municipal Code, extending repeal date of Wrigley Plaza. I move passion, passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Items O two zero two four dash zero zero one two two zero three and one two three seven one, one two three seven two, and one two four two zero were held in committee. Mr. President, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. The Chair recognizes Chair Personal Laspada.
Thank you, Mr. President. Reporting for your Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, for which a meeting was held on Tuesday, October first, 2024. Before the Committee, there were four hundred and twenty-one routine traffic items, all of which passed. If there are no objections, I move passage of these items by the first most favorable roll call vote from the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider the-
Hearing none, so ordered.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the Committee on Police and Fire, the Chair recognizes Chairman Talia Faro.
Mr. President, members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Police and Fire, for which a meeting was held on October seventh, 2024. There was one item before the Committee, which the Committee recommends a passage as amended in committee. Item number one, twenty twenty-three dash four six four four five, the Amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter two dash thirty-six, by adding new section two dash thirty-six dash seven sixty-two, which establishes the policy and procedure for leave following the death of a uniformed service member. Mr. President, Alderman Spazado has requested to speak on this item.
Very well. Chair recognizes Alderman Spazado.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank my colleague, Alderman Palatano, for bringing this forth for us with the help of local two. This was much needed. We wish it was never needed, but it's much needed. But I just want to make sure everybody knows one thing is kind of somewhat clear. So there's been very inconsistency with the fire department, but this current commission- But this current commissioner in there has not been a problem. She's been, she's been solid with us on giving guys leaves with the four deaths recently just had in twenty twenty-three. So some people thought she was the evil person here, but it's not about her. She's been great with us for making sure people get off, brothers and sisters get off to, you know, attend the funeral or wake of their colleagues. So, hope we never use it. Twenty twenty-three, we had four duty deaths, so, but I would just want to thank everybody for supporting us on this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Chairman Talia Faro.
Mr. President, if there are no objections or further comments, I move the passage of this item as amended in committee by the most favorable role, the first most favorable roll call vote in the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Committee on Public Safety Chair recognizes Chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Reporting for your Committee on Public Safety, which held a meeting pursuant to notice on October ninth, twenty twenty-four. Committee recommends passage of the following item, Resolution one zero three five seven, subject matter hearing on extreme weather response on behalf of the City of Chicago. If no one wishes to speak, I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Seeing no hands, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Committee on Transportation and Public Way Chair recognizes Chairman Mitchell.
Mr. President and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Transportation and Public Way, which held a meeting on September thirty of twenty twenty-four. The following items passed by the majority of the members present. Item pages two through six includes thirty-nine ordinances for miscellaneous items introduced by the local aldermen from wards one, five, sixteen, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-two, thirty-five, forty, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, and fifty. Page seven includes items, ordinance two zero two four zero zero one zero eight six nine, a vacation ordinance for a property located in the thirty-fourth ward. If there is no objection, I move passage of these items by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Mr. President, this concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Now for our Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, the Chair recognizes Lord Vice Mayor, Chairman Burnett.
Right. Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the City Council. Presenting a series of reports for your Committee on Zoning, Landmark, and Building Standards, which held a meeting on October eighth, twenty twenty-four. These reports are grouped for convenience. The following items were passed by a majority of the members present. Page one contains three merril reappointments to the Public Building Commission, including David Whitley, James Ellis Jr., and Jose Maldonado. I move passage of these items by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Finance Committee report and the associated unsuccessful motions to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page one also contain, contains documents number zero two zero two four dash zero zero one zero nine eight two, to allow for the designation of an alternate, alternate member to the zoning board of appeals in the event of a vacancy. If Alderman Canusen don't have anything to say, I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Passage one, page one also contains document number zero two zero two four dash zero zero one two four one seven regarding low-slope roofs, skylights, and fire safety. Before I move passage on this item, I believe the sponsors, Alderman Quinn and Alderman Nugent, have something to say.
Very well. The Chair recognizes Alderman Quinn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to recognize Laura Price, the widow of Drew Price, who gave a real courageous testimony yesterday in zoning. Laura, thank you. Thank you very much on behalf of the City of Chicago. We have more work to do on this issue. This is the first step. In the thirteenth ward, I represent scores of firefighters, as evidenced by the gentleman behind you, John Shuneman, who brought this to my attention. So we have more work to do, but rest assured that you have my word, I will be there for you. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Sam Nugent.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank my co-sponsor Marty Quinn for his advocacy, and thank our colleagues, thirty-one of them, who signed on in support of this really important ordinance. In the event of a fire, light shafts like courts and skylights present grave danger to firefighters. These openings often lack guards or parapets, leaving them open for someone to fall into. This ordinance requires guards and walls to be built around the openings to help protect our firefighters. Less than a year ago, the entire city mourned the death of firefighter Drew Price, who lost his life while responding to a fire. Today, this ordinance will help save the lives of firefighters when they respond to a call and help prevent tragic deaths like Drew's. I'm deeply, deeply honored to have Drew's wife, Laura Price, here today. I want to again thank her for her work yesterday and for her ongoing advocacy. I ask my colleagues for their favorable consideration of this ordinance. Thank you, Mr. President.
Very well. You're welcome. Chair recognizes Chairman Burnett.
Passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objections.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Page one also contains the historical landmark designation of the Jackson Storage and Van Company Warehouse located at thirty-six oh nine dash thirty-six eleven West Surmac Road in the twenty-second ward, as well as the historical landmark designation of the Mars Candy Factory located at twenty-nine, twenty-nineteen North Oak Park Avenue in the twenty-ninth ward. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no, no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Moving pa, moving pages one through five, pages, moving on pages one through five contain various map amendments in the fourth, fifth, eighth, ninth, eleventh, fortieth, forty-third, forty-fifth, and forty-seventh wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objections.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Lastly, pages five through six contains various large signs over a hundred square feet in area twenty-four feet above grade in the first, third, fourth, eleventh, twenty-second, twenty-fifth, twenty-seventh, twenty-ninth, thirty-second, thirty-fifth, forty-first, forty-second, forty-third, forty-seventh, and fiftieth wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objections.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Mr. President, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Vice Chair, good enough. Very well. Congratulations, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
All right. For the agreed upon calendar, the Chair recognizes Alderwoman Harris.
I received from the City Clerk Andrea M. Valencia a total of eighty-two items proposed for the agreed calendar consisting of congratulatory commemorative tributary resolutions from Clerk Valencia from the following alderpersons. Alderman Dow, Alderperson Dow, Alderperson Hall, Alderperson Harris, Alderperson Chico, Alderperson Lee, Alderperson Quinn, Alderperson Lopez, Alderperson Coleman, Alderperson Tavarez, Alderperson Burnett, and Alderperson Vegas added to, to resolutions. Alderperson Nugent, Alderperson Riley, Alderperson Gardner, Alderperson Haddon. Thank you. My move is in the omnibus.
Very well. Hearing no objections, so ordered. Thank you. Now for new business, the clerk will call the wards, beginning with the fiftieth ward.
Zoning amendments which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, traffic regulations, traffic control signals, and traffic signs which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, exemption from physical barrier requirement for commercial driveway alley access for parking facilities which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Haddon and others have a proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter six dash ten, establishing protections of civil rights for individuals with actual or perceived association with any of the protected classes, which is referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderperson Riley has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at six forty-three North Orleans Street, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderperson Riley also has proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code, Section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three, to allow additional package goods licenses on portions of East Illinois Street and East McClure Court, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderperson Riley also has proposed ordinance for an honorary designation as Alfonso Fons Hansborough Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderperson Riley also has proposed ordinance for honorary street designation as Anthony A Dupetti Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderperson Riley also has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at fifty-nine West Harbert Street, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderperson Palatano has proposed ordinance for a transfer of funds within the forty-first ward wage allowance account for the year twenty twenty-four, which is referred to Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderperson, Alderpersons Vasquez, Mitchell, and others have proposed resolution for recognition of the Chicago Transit Authority and amalgamated transit union local two forty-one and three oh eight on transportation work during the twenty twenty-four Democratic National Convention, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderperson Ramirez Rosa has proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code, Sections four dash sixty dash zero twenty-two and four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three, to disallow additional alcoholic liquor and package goods licenses on portions of West Belden Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderperson Ramirez Rosa also has proposed ordinance for honorary street designation as James Joseph Mulligan Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderperson Rodriguez Sanchez has proposed order for Amendment of Municipal Code, Section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three, to allow additional alcoholic liquor and package goods licenses on portions of North Kedzie Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderperson Rodriguez Sanchez also has proposed ordinance for a transfer of funds within the Committee on Health and Human Relations for the year twenty twenty-four, which is referred to Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderperson Wagispack has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at twenty-eight fifteen Northwestern Avenue, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderperson Wagispack and Alderperson Cardona have a proposed resolution to call for hearings on increase in the Red Line Extension Project costs, which is referred to Committee on Finance. Alderperson Cardona and Alderperson Wagispack have proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter five dash eleven, by adding a new section five dash eleven dash one eighty, establishing expiration date of tenant opportunity to purchase block six oh six district pilot program to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Two committees have been called, the Committee on Zoning and the Committee on Housing and Finance. The matters referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderperson Telefiero has proposed order for Amendment of Municipal Code, Title seventeen, authorizing zoning administrator to approve administrative adjustments to parking location standards for new construction projects in B and C districts near rail stations, entrances, exits, but not along pedestrian streets, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderperson Irvin has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at four twenty South Pulaski Road, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderperson Burnett has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at fifteen oh one North Kingsbury Street, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderperson Burnett also has a proposed ordinance for the transfer of funds within the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards for the year twenty twenty-four, which is referred to Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderperson Fuentez has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at thirty-five forty West Division Street, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderperson Rodriguez has proposed resolution for Declaration of October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, as First Responders' Day in Chicago, which is referred to Committee on Workforce Development. Alderpersons Taylor, Vasquez, and Haddon have a proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as DJ Casper Cha Cha Slide Perry Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderperson Coleman has proposed order for Amendment of Municipal Code, Section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three, to disallow additional package goods licenses on portion of West Sixty-third Street, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderperson Coleman also has proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code, Section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three, to disa, to allow additional package good licenses on portion of South Ashland Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderperson Coleman also has proposed order for Amendment of Municipal Code, Section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three, to allow additional package good licenses on portion of South Racine Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderpersons Lopez and Dow have proposed order for Amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter two dash eight, subjecting all residents, or all recipients of settlements or payments of claims to indebtedness checked by a city controller, which is referred to Committee on Finance. Alderman Quinn has proposed ordinance for the transfer of funds within the thirteenth ward automatic expense account for the year twenty twenty-four, which is referred to Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderperson Lee has proposed order for Amendment of Municipal Code, Sections four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three and four dash sixty dash zero twenty-two, to allow additional alcoholic liquor and package good licenses on portion of South Morgan Street, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderperson Harris has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at eighty-eight ten South Stony Allen Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderperson Mitchell has proposed order for Amendment of Municipal Code, Section four dash two forty-four dash one forty, to prohibit peddling on portions of East Seventy-Ninth Street, East Seventy-Fifth Street, and South Euclid Parkway, which is referred to Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Alderperson Dow has proposed order for the transfer of funds within the third ward wage allowance automatic expense account for the year twenty twenty-four, which is referred to Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderperson Dow also has a proposed order for an honorary street designation as Harlem Globetrotters Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderperson Dow also has proposed order for Amendment of Municipal Code, Section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-two and four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three, to disallow additional alcoholic liquor and package good licenses on portion of East Forty-third Street, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderperson Hopkins has proposed order for Amendment of Municipal Code, Section five dash twelve dash one seventy, relieving landlords of obligations to attach security deposit rights documentation when tenant does not submit security deposit, which is referred to Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Alderperson Laspada has proposed order for transfer of funds within the first ward automatic wage allowance account for the year twenty twenty-four, which is referred to Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. And Alderperson Laspada also has proposed order for Amendment of Municipal Code, Title fourteen B, establishing standards for exterior lighting, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Your Honor, that concludes the presentation of automatic introductions.
Very well. Thank you very much for the approval of the Journal, Alderman Mitchell.
Mr. President, I am not aware of any corrections to the Journal from the September eighteen, twenty twenty-four meeting. I move that it be approved.
We'll hear it. Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I actually have a motion to dispense with the reading and approval of the Journal.
What is your motion? I didn't hear it.
To dispense with the reading and approval of the Journal.
To dispense of the reading of the Journal?
Correct.
Okay. Does that require a roll call vote, you all, or a voice vote?
Voice vote works. Fine. Roll call, please.
Okay. It's all right. The Chair recognizes Alder Haddon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask the Chair if he could get clarification from Alder Lopez on the intent of his motion.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. Alder Haddon is asking for clarification as well as explanation behind your motion to dispense the approval of the Journal.
Thank you, Mr. President. To answer my colleague's question, according to our rules, Rule Three, we have the ability to conduct business, including the approval of the Journal. Rule forty-seven states that rules of parliamentary practice combined, comprised in the latest published edition of the Roberts Rules of Order newly revised shall govern the council in all cases to which they are applicable and, to which they are applicable and which they are not inconsistent with the special rules of the council. Seeing as how the Roberts Rules of Order state that if the Assembly does not wish to carry out the approval of the minutes, otherwise in this case known as the Journal of Proceedings, we may by a majority vote without debate, dispense with the reading and approval of said minutes. Therefore, Mr. President, I renew my motion so that the Journal will not be approved in this meeting and will be approved in the next subsequent meeting by a roll call vote. Did, did someone pull the fire alarm on us? I went through all that and they pulled the fire alarm. I went through all that and they pulled the fire alarm. Did that answer your question, by the way?
All right, please come back to order. City Council Chamber will come back to order. Thank you. Okay, so there's a motion on the floor, not quite sure the terminology that was used, but if you could, just for clarification, is your motion for the dispensing, I'll put that in quotations, of the Journal from September eighteen, twenty twenty-four, is the purpose of that is to avoid or prevent all business that was carried on at the last meeting for all of that work to, to not essentially become effective or go into effect? Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you again, Mr. President. The motion is, I, I move to dispense with the reading and approval of the Journal from the September meeting.
And again, just for, thank you for using the vocabulary word, but just for clarity, is the purpose of this motion is to prevent all acts and work that was completed at the previous meeting from going into effect?
All things previously done in the last meeting will not be considered as officially published.
I understand, so thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we're all clear.
Yes.
So the motion, okay, I got you. The chair recognizes Alder Vasquez.
I'm not debating. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not debating.
Hold on.
Sorry, my apologies.
Direct to me, it's okay, you all, just.
My apologies, Mr. President.
You're good. All right, chair recognizes Alder Vasquez.
Yeah, I, I just had a point of clarification, not a debate at all. I was curious as to, is the intent to dispense with the reading of the Journal so as to prevent enforcement of the Northwest Housing Ordinance?
Well, that's something that is very specific, but it would be included, anything that was done, and the, the Alder who made the motion confirmed that the purpose behind his motion is to prevent any of the work and the business that was done by this council in the prior meeting, it would prevent those items and that work from going into full effect.
Okay.
The chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've had our gymnastics for today, but I would move to table Mr. Lopez's motion.
All right, which, which you cannot debate, there's a roll call to lay the motion, to lay this motion on the table, so, so again, the initial motion from Alderman Lopez is the motion that would prevent all business completed in the last meeting from going into effect. The subsequent motion from Alderman Irvin to lay that motion on the table, so if you vote yes, you wish that all of the work and the business that was done and conducted to go into effect. If you vote no, then you wish to proceed with the initial motion, which is to prevent all of the work that was done in the previous meeting from going into effect. There's a roll call as our clerk prepares for this motion. Alders, please use your e-vote application to record your vote. Again, the motion is to lay the initial motion on the table. A yes vote means you wish for all business that this body conducted the previous meeting to go into effect. A no vote means you wish to consider the initial motion, which essentially is a motion to prevent all work that was conducted in the previous meeting from going into effect. Without a whisper in my ear.
The voting is now open, the voting is now open. Please use your e-device, the voting is now open. Pastor. Is this what the end of time is? I will now take a voice vote for those who have not used the e-device. Alder Person Hopkins. Is he here? Oh, not in chambers. Alder Person Chico. Oh, did you vote? Okay. Okay, got it. Alder Person Ramirez. Alderwoman Ramirez votes yes. Alder Person Curtis.
Bye.
Curtis is a yes. Alder Person Tabarez. Tabarez is a yes. Alder Person Scott. Scott is a yes. Alder Person Waguspack. Oh, you just voted. Alder Person Rodriguez Sanchez.
Yes.
Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. Alder Person Ramirez Rosa.
Yes.
Ramirez Rosa is a yes. Alder Person Vegas. Not in chambers. Alder Person Napolitano. Napolitano is a no. Has everyone voted whose wish? All right, the voting is now closed. Do you have Scott? Alder Person Scott was a yes.
Thirty-eight yays, nine nays, this motion passes. Back to the initial motion from Alderman Mitchell for the approval of all of the work that this body did in the previous meeting.
I am not aware of any corrections to the Journal from the September eighteen, twenty twenty-four meeting, and move that it be approved.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. For unfinished business, Alderman Mitchell.
I am not aware of any unfinished business.
Very well. For miscellaneous business, Alderman Mitchell.
Except for the date and time setting, the, except for the ordinance setting the date and time for the next meeting, I am not aware in any miscellaneous business.
Very well, then with that, the date and time of the next meeting, Alderman Mitchell.
I've handed up an ordinance to the clerk setting the date and time of the next meeting.
Very well, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, could you please read the ordinance?
Being ordained by the City Council of City Chicago, section one, the next regular meeting of the City Council of City Chicago shall be held on Tuesday, October twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, beginning at two P.M. in the council chamber on the second floor at City Hall, one twenty-one North LaSalle Street, Chicago, Illinois. This ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from its after passage. Gregory Mitchell, Alderman, Seventh Ward.
Alderman Mitchell.
I move passage in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. On the omnibus, Alderman Mitchell.
I move that matters in the omnibus be passed by the first most favorable roll call vote by the committee on finance in the unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Okay, the chair recognizes Alderman Vegas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Forty-one Aldermen signed a letter to have hearings regarding the recent CPS board appointments. I want to thank those forty-one Aldermen for signing onto the letter. I especially want to thank Alderwoman Lee, Haddon, and Tabarez for helping coordinate the forty-one, the forty-one signatures. Now, when you take a look at those signatures, it's very diverse, but the one thing that was in common was about talking about transparency. We want to make sure that a district that has one of the worst bond ratings in the country have people that are dealing and making sure that our children's future is, is, is respected. So after further discussion with my colleague from the Chair of the Committee on Education and Child Development, she has agreed to hold a hearing on October eighteenth to discuss the subject matter of the proposed two P.M. meeting that was scheduled for today. That committee meeting has been publicly noticed. In light of that, unless any of my colleagues who co-signed the call letter for the special meeting disagree, we now withdraw our call for the special meeting that was scheduled for two, two P.M. today, so we can have the Education Committee on October eighteenth.
Okay, hold, hold on a second, we don't, we don't shout across right then. Thank you very much. Sergeant at Arms, could you please restore order so that we can conclude our meeting? Anything else, Alderman Vegas?
That meeting, that meeting will be scheduled on October eighteenth at ten A.M. Both the current board members as well as the newly appointed board members will be in attendance to garner questions from members of the committee as well as members of the city council.
Thank you. I just want to make sure we also have clarification, they have been invited, they have been invited. I don't want anybody in this body to believe that they are automatically expected to attend. Just for clarification, they have been invited. Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell to the motion to adjourn. Sergeant at Arms, could you please restore order? Excuse me, Mr. Sergeant at Arms, could you please restore order, please? Thank you, sir. Sir, could you, Sergeant at Arms, could you please remove the gentleman, please? Could you please remove the gentleman so that we can finish the order of business here? Sir, I'm happy to continue to have a conversation with you, please step out, please. Thank you. On the motion to adjourn, Alderman Mitchell.
On the motion to adjourn.
It's super, once, once you motion to adjourn. I get it, he got to call you.
Yeah, special meeting will happen on October eighteenth at ten A.M., where members of the board have been, and previous board have been invited to attend. On the motion to adjourn, Alderman Mitchell.
Are you gonna call court? I have a point of clarification on his motion.
Okay, Alderman, feel for clarification, sir.
Mr. President, point of clarification, even though they have been invited, I want to remind this body, because it has not been codified, but we still have the right to subpoena whoever the hell we want to come and testify before this body. We have that right. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay, thank you, that's, that's not true. Alderman Vegas.
Mr. President. Mr. President.
Mr. Vegas.
In our discussion, the Chairwoman of Education, it was said that the members, the current members of the board as well as those that you appointed would come to the meeting. Now, I urge you, in your authority, as the person who's appointed, the board members as well as the new board members.
You want me to exercise my authority?
Absolutely. Exercise your authority. Exercise your authority.
On the motion, thank you, thank you, thank you, I will most certainly exercise my authority. In fact, I already have. On the motion to adjourn.
The motion to adjourn.
On the motion to adjourn. On the motion to adjourn, Alderman Mitchell.
I'm sorry.
To make the motion to adjourn, Alderman Mitchell.
There being no further business for this body, I motion move that we adjourn.
Okay, there's been a roll call vote on the motion to adjourn. Those are the rules. Madam Clerk, on the motion to adjourn, please use your e-vote application. Please use your e-vote application, there's been a roll call request on the motion to adjourn, those are within the rules. Please use your e-vote application to cash your vote.
Got it? Right there. Can you open it? Oh, now you can. Now you can. You got it, Stacy? The voting is now open, the voting is now open, please use your e-device to vote. To be the fastest vote of your lives. Don't subpoena me, okay?
All right, Madam Clerk.
All right, I will now call. All right, I will now call on those who have not voted. Alderman Hopkins, not present. Alderwoman Harris, not present. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Lopez is a no. Alder Person Coleman. Coleman is a yes. Alderman Curtis.
Yes.
Curtis is a yes. Alderwoman Scott. Scott is a yes. Alderman Talafaro. Talafaro is a yes. Alder Person Rodriguez Sanchez.
Yes.
Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. Alder Person Ramirez Rosa.
See, yes.
Ramirez Rosa is a yes. Alder Person Gardner, not here. Alderwoman Harris is a yes. Of all those who voted who wished, the voting is now closed.
Thank you, there are thirty-eight yays, nine nays, this meeting is adjourned.